Please rise to the floor, Mr. Lee.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Vicki, can we start with roll call first?
Sure. Councilmember Douglas.
Yep.
Councilmember Reardon.
Here.
Councilmember Conover.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Judson.
Here.
Councilmember Larson. And Councilmember Wren.
I'm here.
Mr. President.
Thank you. So, and if I could, before we jump in tonight, I just wanted to kind of reiterate a couple of things, if y'all don't mind. One is, I had an opportunity to chat both with our insurance folks and our county attorney a little bit about the insurance and our auditor. I spoke with her for a while today. Looking at our projected, and of course, a lot of this is looking at tea leaves, but our projected insurance exposure and how we should be addressing it again in our 2019 budget. Couple of things came to mind. One is that, as you may recall, part of our insurance is funded out of our hospital interest fund, which is a disappearing fund. I did ask Vicki today how much we have left in there, and I think after our next payment, we're going to have probably 670?
Six eighty.
Six eighty. So, that's starting to dwindle, and we're budgeting against that, and we have enough to get us through another year. We could get through 19 without issue. But I think that maybe we need to start trailing off of that a little bit. It seems like, in speaking with the auditor and with Scott, probably a good approach would be to maybe add another 200,000 to our insurance budget. Now, that's going to eat into our available money, but it will help us sort of wean ourselves off a little bit, hopefully, off of that hospital interest fund. So, I think we should keep that in mind as we are looking through, you know, what increases we can and cannot give to the budgets and things of that nature. Also, just to refresh everybody's memory, again, we're banking against our longevity. If we want to budget for that, to refresh your memory, our casino money, little boat money, isn't enough after the drug unit to cover all of our year of longevity. So, we are going to be shy on that, probably 250,000. We'll need to, if we want to budget for longevity, we need to have that in the mix as well. So, that's another 250 that we need to be thinking about. And it seems like probably we can comfortably go, you know, 1.1 million, maybe, maybe 1-2. What do you think, all day?
All.
And, yeah, up to 1-2. So, that's, that part's good. We do have carryover money again, or projected to have carryover money again at the end of this year. But that's going down a little bit. I mean, I think Vicki, at one point, you talked about 2.5 million, but maybe 3 million?
In the health insurance.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we got that carrying over, but it was one point, at one time, over 4 million. I think we started this year over 4. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, that's something that's, you know, that we're eating into a little bit, so we kind of want to keep an eye on that. And I think that if we look at our overall stop loss and exposure, worst case scenario, everybody gets the bubonic plague or something, you know, we have stop loss insurance. As long as we have enough in that carryover money for insurance to cover that worst case scenario, I think we're okay. I think that's, I think that's good budgeting and smart budgeting. And I think that, Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's 9-something, 9.7?
9.7 would be top end.
Top end. So, we're in that, we're in that wheelhouse. So, if we, particularly if we can find another 200,000 to put toward insurance, that would be, that would be great. And then I know we're not talking about raises tonight, but I did ask Vicki again to pull us projected costs of what raises would be. If we're looking at a percentage raise, I didn't get into the flat raise stuff. I just, I just made it easy and did percentages. If we did a 4% raise, we're talking about a little bit north of 905,000 all in. If we're, and I think that's FICA and PERF and everything, correct, Vicki?
Yes.
That's what I mean by all in. 3.5% would be something more like 792,500. 3% would be 679,359. And 2% would be 452,906. So, although we're not doing the raises tonight, if we're concerned about raises, I think we need to have one of those numbers or at least have those numbers in mind as we discuss increases because we're, again, we're playing against that comfortable 1.1 up to 1.2 million of increase. So, that's all I really have, I think, at this point. If anybody doesn't have any questions on that.
With that in mind, whatever we increase from last year so far to next year's budget, this year's budget to next year's budget, that running number?
Right. The general fund compared to 2018, a decrease of 64,091.
Decrease of 64,000.
Awesome. So far, so good. Is that all you guys, all you have? That's all I have now. I might have a word with you later on, but here's it. Okay. So, first up, just you know, we're going to start with the ITS general fund. It must come down. And just to kind of follow up on that, after our meeting with ITS, I had an opportunity to speak with Scott about that as well and kind of echoed some of the comments or thoughts that we had had when you were before us before and asked that maybe they come back with some different options, and that way we can discuss what might be feasible and not.
Okay.
The 45100 fund initially came last time at $800,000. I went ahead and went through this and talked with commissioners. I pulled out all the new equipment that I was planning on paying for for the 157 Franklin office. And I also was able to eliminate nine servers at the courthouse. So, what we're looking at bottom line is the 200,000 we opened up the line item last year with, and I'd like to have an additional 230,000.
230. So, I guess, all right, so following up on that just a little bit. So, when you came to us, you indicated that you needed 800,000 worth of, you know, improvements or upgrades, and you lay off with those were imperative, that you needed them.
Right.
So, are we talking about, and I may have missed it because I was talking, but I mean, are we talking about not doing those things now? And if that's the answer, then what's changed? And/or are we talking about funding them some other way? And I know when we talked, we maybe some of the stuff can go into the bond money. Is that what we're talking about here? Are we still doing all the same stuff, but funding it differently?
Yeah. All the equipment that originally I was going to put in at 157 Franklin is going to be paid by the commissioners.
From the?
Bond.
Bond.
It's part of the, it's part of the construction.
I would like to know, in this computer age where they say, you know, when you buy a computer, it's already outdated, this equipment that we're putting in, what do you, how do you estimate how long that's going to be adequate or good, or can it be updated or rebooted or whatever you do to?
Yeah. The servers and the storage that we purchased now, that's the most expensive thing. They have a three to five-year lifespan.
So, we might be looking at this again in three to five years?
Well, hopefully, if we do our budgeting right and come up with the 200,000 or the 300,000 every year, I can do a little bit each year instead of waiting till the last, last time like we did this time.
Yes. So, that brings us then to the next point is, you know, as you were here and we were chatting about the philosophy of capital projects and budgeting for those and should that be a reoccurring yearly budget thing, you're then indicating that the additional money you want us to put into this budget from, you know, other than what we're doing in the commissioners and the bond money, you're saying that's a reoccurring thing, that you want that every year?
The 200 that we did, that we put in last year, yes.
Okay. Not? Yeah, that's different.
Okay. To be clear, what you, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're asking for is additional 230 in this year's budget, and if we had a total of 430, that you could weather the ups and downs and not necessarily have a giant capital expense coming down the horizon.
Correct.
So, you're asking, you're asking for a reoccurring 430,000?
But 200 from last year.
I understand that.
Yeah. So, he's asking for an additional 230 on top of that.
Right. Got it. And that'll keep us up to date?
That'll keep.
Until, you know, six months from now, a year from now, when some of the older stuff is outdated and something we have to do every, every year.
I think what you're saying, right, is to go keep a.
They'll keep us in a cycle to continually upgrade.
We don't have to play big catch-up. We're doing now.
Yeah. And that's, that's what I.
You're getting a lot of new equipment.
That's what we're trying to get.
All right. All right, well, that's better. So, with that in mind, then the number would be, what? 1-2-2-8, is that correct?
Yeah.
And that would hit our, but what's it, so we're just talking the 230 then, or are we talking something else?
She added 230 to line item 41,50.
So, instead of 800,000, that was requested, 430, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we, in 2018, passed a budget of 732,906. We ended up spending a million 59,250. Came in and requested 1598301, and now we're down to 1-2-2-8301. So, we're all clear on the numbers.
Oh, that, that includes the salaries too, which are, are we, want to?
We're not doing those.
Yeah, we don't.
We want to tackle that next week.
That's Tuesday.
So, that does not include the salaries?
It does.
I don't think, no, it does. Vicki, it doesn't take the salaries, correct?
It does include the requested increase, but it includes the current salary? Okay. As they stand.
You understand that?
Oh, wow.
But to be clear, that's not a, the salary line item is higher than last year. It's not an additional general fund hit because those were moved either from commissioners' budgets or sheriff budgets, general fund budget is here to put IT on.
And we did that earlier this year.
Right.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. So, this takes care of major infrastructure for your department. So, if we're talking about the increase to the general fund playing into that 1.1, 1.2 million, how much are we hitting? Let's be clear about that. How much of that are we, at 1-2-2-8301? Vicki, can we add a difference column? I don't think so.
Can you add a column in here that says 2019 versus 2018?
Because it's up from the, because we passed 732,906. That's my question.
Before you move the.
Understand that. I understand, but then I want to track it from the budgets they came from.
Oh, yes.
That column helps me. Thank you.
Because you said you removed some from the sheriff's budget.
That makes sense.
Move one.
Yes. I don't want to call it here, but somehow it's no lower there. That's fine. That's my, that's my, just want to keep track of mine. You got to follow the mine.
Now, just so I'm clear, on the, on the million 228, and we're saying that that's actually just work, that's current day salaries and wages. That's not talking about any increases for 2019.
No wages, yeah.
Does that include the, in the notes talks about the proposed raise for the director. Is that included in that figure or not?
No.
So, Vicki, what we were just talking about was, of course, we moved the positions from other budgets into this one.
Correct.
And we're tracking that those, that money that we pulled from the other budgets, we're seeing the decrease.
Yes.
Correct? Now.
See it when we get to, well.
We already did the sheriff, right?
Yes.
So.
And then in the commissioner's general fund, there's a decrease also.
Yeah. How much is, how much was the sheriff's decrease? Do you remember?
All.
Because we're, we're saying with the general fund, but not really.
55, 55,000 from the sheriff's.
Okay. Well, just, when we get to the commissioners, we'll, we'll adjust it. Tell me right now at 1-2-2-8301, what does that do to our general fund?
Right now, our general fund, we're.
Don't deduct the commissioners yet, just tell me. We haven't gotten the commissioners yet.
We're up, what was it, 403,400, 430, 430, 704.
All right. So, 430, 704.
The IT budget.
Okay. And we'll, we'll see an adjustment when we get to the commissioners.
Do you want to go to?
No, when we get there. We already saw the sheriff's. We already saw the sheriff's. That's why we're in the negative.
All right. And so.
Yes.
One came from commissioners. You're going to see 65 come out of ours. One came from the sheriff of 55.
We already saw that.
And you already saw that. And then this year, you added one, because if you remember, the sheriff had two, and he replaced the one officer, so.
All right. Well, we're at 430, 704 right now to the general fund. Let's keep track of that. The number's 1-2-2-8301. I'll make a motion to approve it that.
Second.
Yeah, we have a first, we have a second. Do we have any questions or comments anywhere?
I just think there's a lot of money reoccurring for the equipment coming out of there to the general fund, you know, 430,000 each year. I, I don't know, I'd like to see it come out of somewhere else, that amount of money to the general fund. I don't know where I'm looking at lit, but that's just my thoughts. That's a lot of money reoccurring every year for the infrastructure for.
How much do the commissioners have in unallocated lit?
I'm not talking about unallocated, because this is a reoccurring cost we want to cut up.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
And that's just my thought.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any other questions or comments?
Can I just make one comment? I just wanted to let you know, one of the items that we purchased is for our security, and we purchased that, it was around 13,000 to purchase that. We get a three-year warranty, I mean, a three-year maintenance on it, and that runs about 15, 16,000 for the three years. But this is what it does. This is our iron port email security. In 2018, to date, we've had 5,789,606 emails come into our exchange server. Out of that, going through this iron port, it cleans the spam out of there, out of the 57, 5 million that came in, only 406 emails, actual emails, had dealt with the county. So, the money that I'm spending, there's a reason why we're doing that.
It also caught county emails too, though. Other department emails.
And I'm not questioning any money you're spending. I'm just questioning where it should come out of. I mean, I think, you know, what you're doing is important. For what we do here, we need, you need to be up to date. You need to have the best.
This is the eighth grant.
Yeah. You got to have a good back. Okay. The confusion is coming from the fact that I think Don is, from your guys' perspective, you keep, you put 200,000 in his budget last year, okay?
I think he keeps anticipating that that was going to come out, okay? So, in all reality, we need 230,000 every year.
Correct. After 2019. Including what we already gave, so the 200,000 that we put in is good enough.
We need 30 grand more.
See, that's, that's where things get a little squarely. When, when requests are made in front of us.
I know.
That, that, then they just sort of shit before my very eyes. So, you don't need 430.
We don't.
You need 230.
Need 230.
Repeating, but next year, we need the extra, so.
The extra 200,000.
157 annual.
That was part of the original two-year plan that we put.
Yeah, but wait, so that's not, what are you doing there?
Do you want to?
You just want, you want to up to 200 to 200,000.
So, you want to be 230. You want to be 230, and then you said, but wait a minute.
He wants 430 for 2019, but the yearly, to keep everything up, is 230 rather than 430. So, when you get to 2020 and beyond, only 230 is repeating rather than 430.
Because we're getting closer to where we need to be on a lot of that stuff.
If we keep talking, is it going to get down lower? All right. So, up to 430 you're asking for, 230 of it you think is reoccurring, and 200 is toward a capital improvement. Is that a good way to put it?
Yes.
And that capital improvement is not 157.
It's part of the two-year plan that we submitted earlier this year.
Right.
This is the second year of that, to finish up the rest of the stuff that we presented in that plan.
So, is there a better place to take it from than the general fund? You guys have suggestions or ideas?
Well, if that, now we are squarely into a one-time capital.
Yes. I would like to find another place for that to pull out of so that it doesn't hit. I'm sure we could find that 200.
About what time next year would you need that?
What time?
Timing, like month?
Date.
Like right away or?
Vicki, take the 430 down to 230 in this budget. Take it down.
And when do you think you'll need it, is what he's asking, that additional to finish what you guys started with the commissioners?
I was planning on spending a lot of the first quarter, but.
Well, it's.
That's fine.
It's fine.
That's fine. It's not, we're not saying no. We're just trying to find where the money needs to come from, Don.
So, now the number's 1,028,301. I'm sorry, Jeremy, go ahead.
No, I mean, nobody's arguing what you have to do at all. We want you to upgrade and stay, stay with it. We absolutely want you to. We're just trying to find out where to get the money from. That's all. So, if we can get that number to 230, come back, January, February, talk to us, tell us, we'll find that money.
Just as an example, in January, I was planning on buying those 10 servers that I need.
For how much? The 10 servers for where?
150,000. That will be installed downstairs in the building.
Okay, then come back, come back.
No, 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 he doesn't have to. He'll have that 230 he can use. He can come back when he needs more, right?
All right.
So, you don't have to come back in January. You'll live off the 230 for a little bit.
It could be more like February, March.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, I made my motion, the 1,028,301.
We've got a first, we have a second.
You can curse second.
Second, yep. So, do you understand, we're, please come back, get through the 230, finish what you're doing. Don't stop what you're doing. Please finish what you're doing. Just come back.
We good, Vicki?
So, I'm going to start with the 230.
We all thought up now? We need that other two, come back, get on our agenda. I want to hear what you say.
Okay.
Vicki, you have that left.
So, are we saying that we're budgeting, so that we encourage people to come back for additional progress?
No.
No.
No, this is a one-time.
We're hopefully not taking it for the general.
This is a cap, part of, we're finishing a capital project. Well, thank you.
So, at 1,028,301, now we're down to 230,000, 704 head to the general fund?
Do I? Yeah. What, what else is different? A little more from the, no. So, no, because we had some said, so what is it now, Vicki?
That's yours.
What's the hit to the general fund at one, not this budget, keep me up to date here?
231,000.
Is it the 230, 704? All right. Okay. Awesome. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Thank you, Don. Next up, we have the ITS print shop budget.
We can go through all the other stuff, isn't it?
I just am going in order of the list here. Is there something else you wanted to talk about?
I mean, my consulting money, my maintenance.
Well, I thought we discussed those last time.
You did. You approved the budget, but you did, you were talking about a copier, like what's the term?
I still want to approve that last time.
We just approved the whole budget the way it's laid out here.
I don't know what you're, I don't know what you're talking about, so.
We approved the.
No, if you got, Don.
What do you, what do you mean?
24,000, an increase of 24,000.
So, you want to go back, go back to this budget.
What part are you wanting to discuss?
I didn't know that you approved the last time. The consulting money, the travel.
All that's, all that's. We just approved the whole budget right now. We discussed that previously, so we didn't have to rediscuss it unless you had something else you wanted to talk about. I don't want to cut you off.
I'm just a network guy. I'm trying to.
I understand.
No problem.
Work.
Wired.
Okay. So, next up, we are to the ITS print shop budget, and I think we were just, we were getting up. Correct? We had knocked out that 3,000?
Keep it the same as last year.
So, okay, so 60 to 10? Is that correct? Okay. Do we have, we already voted on it too? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got the Memorial Opera House managed.
Thanks, Tom.
Enjoy it.
All right.
How you guys doing?
How are you?
What's going on, guys?
Usual.
Here we go.
Everything breaks. Dan, the whole for has.
He's got, he's got a little bit of a.
Hey, we've been trying.
You get Jeremy in to play that one.
Perfect. Don't even say it, Dan.
I'm not going to.
We've got plenty of actors up here.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Live for one, it was on the stage.
I was telling him, I was too, and I was fine.
Well played.
I have a question. Vicki, FICA and PERF, why are those increasing? Was that based on salaries? Is that, in my book, they're increasing. I can't follow the screen yet. Explain the part about the grant salary moved into this fund.
Last year, when you granted the raises, you passed the directive that if anyone had a, another fund that you could take the raise out of, to take the raise out of that fund. And it was decided that the raise for the Memorial Opera House would come out of the one grant fund. That grant is not being proposed in 2019. So, in order to keep the current salaries, this is not an increase in, in salaries yet.
Right. Thank you.
In order to keep that we've had moved that roughly four thousand dollars into your regular fund, and then we increased the FICA and PERF.
Well, so tell me a little bit, what happened with the grant?
So that is the D N R grant that allowed us to get the feasibility study done for the renovations and preservation of the building. That grant is exhausted and has to be closed out by the end of this year, and the remaining funds that are in that grant will cover any of those outstanding expenditures for the rest of this year. It's not a grant that we're rolling over to next year, so.
So this is a slight increase. So at one point, there was discussion, you wanted to take someone from part-time to full-time, is that correct?
That's correct. I'd like to move Natalie from part-time to full-time, and I believe I proposed that for Tuesday night for wages and raises.
Yeah, and so as we get into that, so I guess my question's going to be in anticipation of that. So will we be reducing then hourly to compensate for that, or are you asking for an increase to your budget?
Yes, I'm probably, I'm planning to reduce hourly, um, because I'm looking at, yeah, because Natalie currently being an hourly employee, we aren't looking to replace her with another hourly employee at this point.
Yeah, that's good. Um, can you kind of tell me why royalties has gone down?
Sure. Um, we are not spending as much money on royalties, uh, just, it's not a huge expense for us anymore because of the fact that we're actually a government entity. That's something that we researched when I started as business director. We get a nice discount on royalties. If we use the same rights house, we get discounts. We're members of American Association of Community Theaters. That comes out of dues and subscriptions. It's like five hundred dollars a year. It saves us about ten percent on royalties every year, so there's no need to have that much money in that fund.
So Scott, let me ask you.
Yes.
We, so we budgeted eighty thousand and you've spent eighty-six hundred.
Correct.
Do you anticipate a lot more expenditure for the rest of the year?
Yes, the invoices haven't come in yet from them, so through the end of the year, we'll probably get closer to that number.
It's closer to eighty?
No, no. Closer to like fifty at most.
Okay. So can that fifty number come, come down even more? Just asking, because I mean, if we can offset some of those additional costs that you have in contractual services.
Well, a lot of it has to do with the rights houses specifically and what their terms are regarding when we pay them out. Some of them expect you to get, they, they won't release the rights to you at all unless you pay it all upfront. Some of them, well, you can pay us three months later, you have to pay us two weeks after your show closes. It really depends on when they want to be paid. So we, uh, you know, we've dealt with about five or six different rights houses, and everybody's got a different system.
So in order to pay things for the future year, so we have secured rights, that's why we try to keep a little bit of a cushion in there.
So it looks like maybe in seventeen, you spent just a little under twenty thousand for royalties, so, so explain this, and I, I get it, we're not, we're not involved in the, but I mean, why, why so low in seventeen, but you expect fifty thousand in eighteen?
It's just the cost of each individual show varies. Shows like Mamma Mia that we're doing next year, the rights are extremely expensive. Um, shows like, you know, Guys and Dolls that have been around for forty, fifty years, the rights are not nearly as expensive. It just varies show to show. It varies based on how you sell tickets. Um, there's a lot of variables that come in there, and...
If the writers are still alive, that also can drive the cost up quite a bit.
Yes.
How much is in the fund now?
Is this a general fund budget?
No.
No.
I just like asking.
No, but we shouldn't, but, uh, no, no, no. Hold on, hold on, hold on. No, it's not a general fund budget, but there have been times historically that we've had to shore it up with general fund.
Sure.
So that's why we're asking.
So right now, you guys got forty-six thousand in there?
Correct, and we, uh, cash on hand, though, with money that we haven't transferred over from reported collections from ticket sales, we're closer to eighty thousand with money that we haven't transferred over in our report of collections, yes.
So if we took that number to forty thousand, you'd be able to make it work next year?
I believe we would be able to, absolutely.
Absolutely, absolutely, because these rights houses that we use, we've been using them for years, and Scott's been very fastidious working with them over the last couple of years, especially as creative director, um, so they are, they work with us. They're very fluid.
How's this budget look right now? Can you tell me? Or perhaps the answer. Get that I T guy back.
So you didn't put the, um, what you're wanting to do?
As far as moving Natalie and all that?
No, I was under the understanding that that was on the one forty-four and that was for, you don't want to deal with it now?
I mean...
I mean, it's the bud, just deal with it.
That's right, let's look at this budget real quick and then we can...
Is there something you want to do? Let's get out of the way so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle on Tuesday.
So, so it looks like this budget's holding its own, right? I mean, are you comfortable with this budget holding its own?
And if I can comment to, uh, the revitalization of Memorial Opera House Foundation grants, all of that is kind of helping us shore up some of the things too, so we don't have to come to this body and say, help.
Oh, so let's pull up the one forty-four. Let's just talk about that for a second, if you don't mind.
Yeah, we've received so far this year in grants, you know, forty-two thousand dollars, and that's paying for our children's theater program. We just won a grant for ten thousand from P C C F, so.
So if ticket sales get a little, let me know, I'll come back to the state.
Surprise, you didn't audition for It's a Wonderful Life, you'd be a good producer.
I told you I was gonna be Clarence, but then they wanted me to sing and dance.
No, she doesn't want you to sing and dance. She wants you to be the mayor.
All right, I'm in. All right, I'm gonna be the mayor. And be wonderful life? Oh, it's gonna be a...
The first day actually starts at seven o'clock, so.
Oh, man.
So, sorry?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. I'm always concerned about being the mayor. There's a fifty-fifty chance of indictment.
I am.
Okay, I'll let that sink in. Everyone, hold on for a minute.
Mm-mm.
So, okay.
We're wanting thirty-six, uh, for this...
The, the technical director?
No, that's actually for administrative coordinator would be the position that Natalie would be moved into.
Right, that's what we're talking about.
Correct.
So, yeah, I don't see that one.
Do you have that folder somewhere?
That's, I think it's... Are you sure that was?
I would. There it is, back there. Um, oh, under salaries? Oh, it's at the end, all right. Uh, okay. Can we just plug that in now?
Yeah, but what would you lower your hourly then to compensate? Would you lower it dollar for dollar?
Down to sixty thousand.
Down to sixty.
Okay. So lower his hourly to sixty and add in the, the full timer. Now, that's going to affect FICA, PERF, and all that stuff, right? Want to, guys also want to bring that royalties down to forty, like you mentioned, that they can make that work? Vicky, could you make royalties forty, please? Are you sure about that, the forty thousand royalties? You're good with that?
I think that we can make that work.
Where we're at now for next season, I, I think that should be doable.
Because we have several of them already set out for next year.
Right.
Twenty-twenty, yeah.
Yeah, if you need more, I mean, if something happens.
If we get to a point where we apply for shows in twenty-twenty and we're looking rough in May.
We get back.
It's the final number. We can make it.
But also depends on what we can and can't get.
We're pushing along, Sylvia.
And they're doing great.
I think you...
I don't echo that opinion.
What would you like, a million dollar bottom line, Sylvia?
No.
I just want, want the numbers.
She's a bold one, I forgot.
I'm sorry, Cheryl.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're doing fine.
Keep pushing forward.
She's very passionate about the Memorial Opera House.
Yes, they, they offered me to be a flower.
Don't, 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 Dan.
I'm not doing it.
We're, we're buying them time over there. I don't know how much more time.
Which is good.
Yeah.
Let's stretch it, the industry.
And make sure that...
We, we, uh, as a board are most appreciative of the work that you've done.
Thank you.
The improvements that have made, that have been made over the last couple of years, without a doubt.
Thank you.
Your work on trying to drive the royalty costs down, uh, is a credit to you and your team, and...
Thank you.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you very much. I, I absolutely give all the credit to my team. Um, you know, they're really, really hard workers. We are on the track right now. I predicted that we'd be hitting sixty thousand dollars in ticket sales this year for season tickets. We're currently at sixty-four thousand. So that is a credit to them, just getting out there and really doing the hard work. We want to continue giving quality productions as much as we can.
Once, once word gets out that I'm...
I mean, come on.
That's it. It's okay, all right.
Yeah, the show's already sixty-five percent sold out, so.
Didn't even know you were going to be in.
It's a surprise.
There was a lot of, my agent has been out there.
Yes.
Saturday matinee.
How you doing over there, Vic?
You got a broken calculator?
I hate it when that happens.
We can be the seven dwarfs.
It'd be good. All of us are too tall, except for Jeremy.
What? I expect. We're all going to get hit by him one time or another.
Exactly.
We got it. Those are the numbers.
Friends like Dan who needs enemies.
So what's the new big number?
Can we scroll down?
Yeah, nice. Thank you.
Four fifty-seven, three twenty.
Make that motion.
Second.
Now, the first, we have the second. Any other questions or comments?
Is that what you want it?
That works.
Hey, no one else? Hey, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you very much.
See you, guys. Uh, do we need to discuss the fee and our grants, or no, done?
That'll be exhausted at the end of the year, so.
So we'll cross it off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the commissioners general fund. Can you guys permanently add that difference column back in?
Do what?
I, I want the difference column in here.
Oh, I got yours.
Run, yeah, run. You gotta be out there by Sheldon, I have a rehearsal tonight. Okay. I gotta pull it up. Doesn't match mine.
Yep.
All right, uh, you guys want to, uh, tell us a little bit about, uh, what's going on with the five thousand dollar overtime, what the plans are? Well, at least in my book, it's not on here.
What are we on right now?
Yeah, what number? Oh, I'm on Lit. I'm on the general fund.
We're on general fund?
We're gonna start.
We got, yeah.
Messing up my order here.
Five thousand savings.
So the building liability is down?
So we're taking, this is where we're taking the salaries out for the...
Yes.
For the...
Nine one.
The I T.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, the nine-one-one people went to their budget.
And what's contractual services that's increasing, seven-one thousand?
When you pay somebody to do something.
With what?
What, what are we doing? Uh, it's... Two ninety-six, three twenty?
Oh, um, well, we have the health clinic coming, and so that's...
Oh, that's, okay, that's great.
So let's talk about the, so the health clinic, is that the Franciscan thing?
Correct.
So the, the date, and this is more for informational purposes, because we need people to go to those. We need to put the word out there. This is our last foray. If we don't get people to start using these clinics, we're going to have to change the insurance again.
Yeah.
We're not going to keep dipping into other funds when our employees and our families won't utilize the clinics.
These free clinics?
They got prescriptions, they got everything.
Free to the employees. Starts January first.
Thank you for saying that.
Yes.
So we are, we are at the eleven hour.
Wonderful.
So...
And labs.
There's, there's certain labs, there's certain medications, prescription?
It's free.
Free.
Why would they not use it?
Well...
We're hoping they do.
Because people, people have, yeah, there's incentives, the insurances, the prescriptions should be a big incentive.
But otherwise...
They're like a hundred and fifty medic, common medications, you can give them three there.
That's where we hope we'll pick up.
Our break-even number's lower. First year, kind of incentivizes the company and to motivate the employees to go.
And that keeps our claims exposure down. I understand what it is. We got it, I mean, we've had disappointing in the past participation in things.
Oh, we tried something similar?
Well...
Not like this.
Yeah, this is better.
This is a lot more, and also what's included in this program is there's, uh, uh, it's built into the price and everything. It's a tremendous outreach program and training and other things, and, and, uh, educational things that we're going to be doing throughout the year. So, um, I think the other thing we wanted to, to let you know too, that we signed a two-year agreement, so we have a two-year window. The goal is to get to sixty percent participation. That's, anything over sixty percent, that's when you, that's when you pay for the plan and you start reducing your cost on your, your health insurance program. And then what, what we were able to negotiate with Franciscan is obviously the first six months to a year is when you're starting to enroll and get people coming in, so we have a sixty...
The first six months, we only pay sixty percent of our employees' headcount. The second, we pay eighty percent, but in that second, well, actually, from month seven through twenty-four, we're going to be paying eighty percent of our headcount, and if that headcount is below eighty, we get half the credit back.
And as far as the headcount, I wanted to clarify.
Yep.
The headcount goes based on the number of employees that are enrolled, but it doesn't count their, their dependents. So we're, it's not, we don't really need eighty percent of everyone who's on the plan to go. It's just eighty percent of the employee number.
Yeah, but man, we, we, we ought to be able to get that anyway.
I agree.
It's just insane for people not to utilize it. And our numbers, I know, going to some of the, like, utilizing the old, we had the clinic over there on thirty, and we had to... And the participation wasn't great, and even the quarter, I mean, we got to get people going.
Well, the bottom line is, if, if, if the services aren't utilized, insurance costs for employees is going to go up.
Yeah. And I think that's, that's...
There's a huge educational process that's going to be going on.
Yes, and that was one of the main reasons in the R F P that, uh, they were chosen, uh, because we felt that their outreach and their marketing was top-notch. They were also low, lowest. Um, but I think what we were looking for is a way to incentivize our employees, and, uh, we've tried many things in the past. You know, whether they were rolled out properly or not, I can't really comment on that, but this is a new path. So we think we got the incentives in the right place, and I think now, uh...
And they've done this before.
Well, just from our perspective, I mean, from the council's perspective, every year, we have the white elephant in the room, that's insurance. And, you know, we're dipping from this fund and that fund and this fund to, to fund these, the plan for our employees because we want to give them insurance benefits, but the fact of the matter is, their buy-in is to participate in these things, or we're going to not, I mean, there's only so much we can pull out of these other funds. We just can't have that go on forever now.
How many facilities do they have in that area?
Three.
There's three?
And they open on, they're open on Saturday, too. Uh, I think the Saturday clinic is in Valparaiso.
Where's the other ones we're using?
Portage.
Portage, and then, isn't there one, Chesterton?
Yeah.
So the Portage one is over by...
So I understand that you got, uh, a number of responses to the R F P?
Correct, five.
Five, and that, um, this was our cheapest and the most attractive.
Responsible, we felt, for locations, uh, the negotiations of the contract.
Evening hours.
Evening hours. Um, I would also like to point out, too, I think, I think this is an opportunity where the council and the commissioners really need to pat ourselves on the back. When I came to this office three and a half years ago, we were right around fourteen and a half, fifteen million dollars a year on our insurance. That wasn't that long ago. And this year, we're guiding maximum max out is nine point five. That's some, that's a pretty big, uh, reduction, and I think we should all sort of...
Especially with insurance costs.
We should all pat ourselves on the back a little bit because that, that, that's, that's pretty, pretty good. So, um, kudos to all of us.
Yeah, and what, and I literally think that the employees need to understand that when we're sitting here saying we have to increase our insurance budget by two hundred thousand, that takes away money that we could give in raises or other benefits. So they need to, they need to buy in.
Yeah, well, and I think the other neat thing is that by going out, really working at the workshop, and rebuilding liability in the auto, we were able to find the money for the clinic, from money that we were spending anyway, in a different way.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're adding the clinic in this budget, so.
All right, awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, moving right on, as they say. What else we got changing here?
Motion to approve the budget.
Back it, scroll down for a second. Any questions or comments?
Would you scroll down, Vicky?
So the, just to, so the sixty-five thousand dollar reduction is for, again, that's for the employees that we moved over. So that's a dollar for dollar. Okay, yep. Awesome. All right, anyone else have any questions or comments?
No, this one.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Next up, we got the ninety-six oh two commissioners.
Commissioners.
And that budget looks like it's staying the same.
There's another one, any general funds?
Federal prison.
Federal, yeah.
It's a federal prison. So I want to just, all right, so a couple of questions, just to sort of clarify or get it. A little history lesson to get on this. So when the sheriff comes in front of us and says, I've got this much money built up in my federal prisoner fund, now, I just want, just want to make sure that we're all, we're all on the same sheet of music. So, again, that's not so much this fund, but I mean, generally speaking, from your perspective, is there a federal prisoner fund that the commissioner, uh, that the sheriff is building up money in for purposes of spending on other things?
No.
Thank you. And it's because we pulled that fund into the general fund and the money flows to the general fund, so I want...
And this will all get spent on the jail.
Yeah, so, so that we're all, and I don't want that, it's not necessarily negative kind of, but I think there's a tremendous amount of misconception in the sense that we often hear this money's been built up. We're keeping track, at least from the sheriff's department, we're keeping track of how much we're bringing in and how much is being spent in the jail, and this, that, and the other. And they believe that in their bookkeeping, they have money built up, but it, that's not how it is. That if we, if we, yeah, if we spend money on something, it's a hit to the general fund.
Yeah.
And, and I guess to make it even simpler, or maybe not, if we wanted to, you could just collapse this into our individual general fund, but the reason why we left it, I believe historically, was to make sure the federal prisoner money was supporting at least these two budgets that we have, and there was that incentive out there.
Yeah, and the history of this fund, yeah, so, all right, yeah, that's, I just wanted to hit that one more time.
Motion to approve.
We got a first, we got a second, any questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Next up, we've got Lit, previously seated.
Vicky, would you charge? So, right now, our hit to the general fund, since we now, you pulled out the sixty-five thousand, right? I mean, we get the sixty-five thousand, so we, now where are we at?
One fifty-five, seven hundred and four.
Just keep track. All right. Excuse me.
I have a question. We've talked plenty of times about longevity. I know half of it's going to come out of riverboat fund. Where do you guys expect or suggest the other half to come out of? Where are we going to get the longevity? We want a budget for it. I have to talk to most of council members, I won't speak for everybody, but I'm getting a general consensus, I know I think we need a budget for it.
What is the total amount of longevity?
It's about four hundred thousand.
Total amount?
Yes, that includes five and a half.
And about, about fifty comes out of the casino, which leaves us two fifty shy of a load.
And if we, if we half the payment is really about two hundred, did we get it at the end of June, eight into July?
Do you guys have suggestions for that? Have you guys thought about it? So, where did we shore it up last year?
Last year, uh, I don't know. Um, Lit.
Where'd we shore it up this year?
General.
General.
Yeah. So, where we...
And we still have the next payment, assuming.
And... So, we shored it up from unallocated Lit?
Last year.
Yeah. How much is it, how much do you, how much do you expect unallocated Lit, a projection to carry over to next year?
Right.
How much?
One point three million.
And what's, what do we want to keep there?
And again, that assumes that they're trending down, all of their budgets.
That was the insurance one, I was more concerned about carrying. How much does it say, two point what?
Two point three.
What did we carry, what did we have at the start of seventeen? What did we have at the start of eighteen? What did we have in unallocated Lit?
At the start of this year, the fund had cash.
I don't want to hit our general budget. So, we started the year at two point four?
At the end of the year.
Okay. So, I don't care. So, December thirty-first or January first? You picked one of the two. It was two point four?
Yes.
All right. And you're expecting it to be about two point three at the end of this year?
Can you move that?
Well, that is, the unallocated question is based on if they spend out all of their budgets.
Right.
Because we don't know yet how they're going, how they're spending.
So, if they spent out all their money, you're saying there's two point three at the end of the year?
Yes.
Or the first of next year?
Correct.
Do you, do you have things outstanding right now, one point three million roughly? I mean, are you going to spend that budget? What do you have, like three point nine right now? Let's...
Four million right now. But if they don't spend, it just averts back to, averts back to...
Are you using that whole budget up, if you think?
Jeremy, I...
We didn't have a lot last year.
Mostly, yeah. But I mean, obviously seventeen, you're pretty much right.
The things that are in here are just like the bond payment, life insurance.
NERC.
The big, the big numbers are the things that are coming in under water.
So, the two hundred thousand dollar increase for economic development, is that moving, are you, is that for ours?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the redevelopment commission, correct.
I budgeted to the state's forecast, five million, four hundred eighty, twenty-seven percent.
Contractual services, what are you looking at the increase out of that? What are you thinking?
Well, that's the rest of the clinic money.
Okay, that's the rest.
Really, that's the...
Okay.
What?
Just the last bit of money for whatever comes up.
What, what kind of things might come up for that?
Every year's a little different.
Well, that clears up. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Do we have an estimate of, I mean, we usually get an estimate, right, of what we're going to...
Yeah, it's five million, four hundred and...
The state's standby, you got five point four nine.
Five point, rocus, right. All right.
All right, well, that's, that's all right, man.
What are you slipping the overtime? What are you thinking that's coming, what are you going to use that for?
Oh, yes. Snow shoveling.
Snow shoveling?
Plowing.
Yeah, if you plow, it will be better faster.
We may have used it, but it comes...
I just was confused by the snow shoveling.
I'm plowing issue.
See, I don't take it.
The proposal is to pay our snowplowers overtime, supposed to comp time.
Yeah, sorry.
Only, but only for plowing.
It's really hard to pay part-time people and you can't give them comp time. So, it's created a lot of problems.
Well, they don't want to come in.
They don't want, yeah.
It's the motivation.
Yeah.
It's very hard when you're out for twenty hours and you're still late and just come in and it's three in the morning and it's very hard to go plow for five hours for comp time.
Not to mention slightly dangerous. I mean, it's, we're not talking about, no, no, that's no plow, I ain't slept in three days.
It's just something we gotta get done.
It's just something to help my team finish it up, finish strong.
So, this one, we're moving away from comp time and incentivizing the some...
But just for that narrow area of problems.
So, we're not, and we've got, because I know...
This is not across the board, this is just for that time of year. That's where we're running into the problems.
Can we subtract it from the line within that Lit budget that would be otherwise for his, for that department's...
So, what are we...
We're really short one hundred and fifty thousand, is that what you guys think in longevity?
No. Sure, two fifty. We get a hundred and fifty out of the riverboat, yeah. So, can we put the two fifty in here?
Well, I mean, you're over budgeting, you're going, you're going to be budgeting right into the unallocated right away, I mean, right.
What suggestions do you guys have?
If you want my, my suggestion is we find a hundred thousand dollars and do the first, get the first longevity payments budgeted. When you get to the second longevity payment and at the end of the year, it's a whole lot easier for everybody to figure out where to piece and cobble up the...
And here's my suggestion. My suggestion is that we continue to budget out of the casino money, remainder out of the unallocated Lit, the end.
Second thing.
But that's not the agreement, because we got into that, I think, and it ended up, they said it was too late, ended up coming out of general fund. I mean, if that's going to be the...
There's any, we should do it that way.
I think...
It makes sense to me that.
Yeah.
Done. It's locked in there. They can auto pay it if the commissioners are on board. Let's do it. So, you brought up C-word, comp time. And I know you guys have addressed comp time at the commissioners' meetings.
Motion to approve this budget.
Hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. I'm not done.
Yeah, but it's...
I'll let you know I'm done.
Is it relative to this budget?
It is, because we're talking about comp time and I want to have a conversation about comp time.
Well, I got a motion on the floor.
Oh, come on, Joe.
Anyway, discussion, thank you. So, with respect to comp time, you're the one that's screaming about comp time.
Oh, I know, but I was, I was talking about comp time and they're not, they're not being, be childish, so...
It's not childish. So, the, okay, let's move forward and let me finish my sentence.
Come on, guys.
So, with respect to comp time, so do you guys have any employees in your budgets that have an excessive amount of comp time built up?
Well, we just took care of the health department, that's the budget. You guys had the animal shelter dealt with.
And we explained that once, you got, she inherited some of that.
Yeah, so that was taken care of. Parks is in us.
Parks is taken care of themselves, I think.
And Matt's working on his. He's got a plan with the...
And this was from years ago.
So, you inherited his grow.
Yeah.
How many hours is that for?
I believe he's at a hundred and fifty and he's actually going to be using a lot of it.
Ironically, you compared to some other Dallas County, that's...
He has a child coming up that's going to have some major medical stuff and he's going to need to take a lot of time off.
All right, so you're thinking that the plan is that...
Our plan is for him to, we've all sat down, documented it.
Do you have any, do you have any employees with a lot of comp time that you are thinking you're going to have to buy them out?
No.
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 That's my question. Is that okay, Jeremy? Anyone else have any questions or comments?
My, my question is, do we want to put the two fifty in here? When you say out, unallocated Lit, if we're going right here, right now?
They're saying they want, well, agreeing to do it.
Well, how, yeah, how would we...
Do you want to budget it here or do you want to just turn it in June, open addition?
I want to budget.
Yeah, six and one, it's fine. It's six and, for this particular thing, it's six and one, half dozen the other.
But Vicky...
Because we're just going, we're just going to eat against it. Yeah, it's, either way.
It needs to be in the budget, in my opinion.
What do you guys prefer?
Put it in the budget.
Yeah. Whatever you guys want.
What do you want to do?
Just because this year, we...
Two hundred thousand.
Because...
Yeah, but there were other reasons.
A hundred thousand.
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Yes, two fifty.
I'll put it total, yeah.
Well, two fifty and then the one fifty will come out of riverboat.
And we will have to do an appropriation on that in the year.
Right.
All right, so that takes care of the longevity problem.
Time for a vote.
I'm satisfied. Do you amend your motion?
Yeah, my motion includes the new line item for two thousand.
Any adjustments?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a first, we've got a second. Any questions or comments on the current budget? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we've got Commissioner of Projects, CCD.
Yep.
Oh, that includes...
We're just going by the orders you guys gave us, so...
We just did all of Lit.
Oh, that included all these, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. CCD fund. Thank you, guys.
At what point do you want to talk about the capital projects and the capital, the things?
Whenever you want.
One of them, he's here.
Let's do it. Let's do it. Come on now.
Let's just get it done.
Look at, I mean, the Lit project.
Scott Cherry.
I'm over here.
The bond.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Wondered where it was.
Thank you.
Hey, it's just in there.
Thank you.
See.
Just to give, this is a spreadsheet, I'll turn it over here to Scott in a minute, but this is a spreadsheet that we're looking at about every three to four weeks. It has all the projects on one spreadsheet and this is what we're using to manage the project, at least from a financial perspective. And Scott Cherry from Skillman is here to sort of go through the numbers for you real quick, so...
If you're getting this every three to four weeks, can you also share it with the council? This would be really helpful to stay updated.
Yeah, it's, it's, just so you know though, it's just numbers.
Yeah, no, no, but it's, it's just what's going on, yeah.
There's a story there, there's a big story involved in all this, so just a lot of moving parts.
We just want info.
Yes, so maybe like every couple of months, we have this and you guys...
Whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, come and explain it a little bit.
We'll come.
That'd be helpful. Thank you, my crowd.
So, I'll take it over. Quite a while ago, we established a program, so when you hear me say program, I'm talking about the four projects that you see at the top there. Last meeting we had was on October, it was just yesterday, I think, and then, but that's compared to what we had in September. So, every month or every few weeks, we get together and we talk about it. So, as you can see, what the spreadsheet shows is the four projects that we've talked about and all the costs associated with it. So, if you look at, for example, at the very top, column A and B, that's the North County complex. And we're monitoring and watching where we're at with each, with each of the projects. So, when the project is bolded, for example, in line one hundred, if you look at the North County complex, the three million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand that you see under line, column B, that has been bid and that's a real number. So, that's a good sign. We will be receiving bids for bid package number two, which was, we're expecting to be about three, four point three million dollars in January. So, we'll have that number in hand, but we're targeting a budget of seven point, call it seven point nine million for the North County complex. And that's the construction costs. Below that are some of the other costs associated with construction, such as general conditions and some pending changes. You can see we have a pending changes line in there and that's when we encounter some of the things that we anticipate, we had it in the contingency, but we move it out of the contingencies to the pending, so that we at least have it flagged and we know where we're going with that. And that'll come into play a little bit down the road when I get to the other projects.
You do that three hundred thousand, is that a good number, you think?
The contingency, which one are you looking at?
I'm still on that one that you're, construction contingency, three hundred thousand. The North County complex?
Yes, I do. And I say that because of a couple of things. We have some general conditions, we already bid fifty percent of the project and the fifty percent that we're bidding is site work. And a lot of times, your construction contingency is probably, twenty-five percent of that is vulnerable coming out of the ground. So, we believe that's a good number and should cover us for this project, hopefully. It's construction. So, when you look at the total construction cost for the North County complex, we're targeting about eight point four, eight eight million. The rest of the lines, as you go down to the project soft costs, those are all the professional fees, I put the bid ones, numbers in there, you have loose equipment, such as in line two oh three, land and building purchase came into play with the one fifty-seven and we can talk about that down the road. Other soft costs, which would include things like survey, quality control testing, there's probably some environmental money budgeted in some of those, soil borings, all those kinds of things make up the other soft costs. And typically, when you start out a project, when I first got hired, I always say to use about twenty-five percent for soft costs. Just figure that, depending on your financing and things like that. Well, the financing was taken care of out of other funds. So, in this case, we're around fifteen percent with the soft costs, which is good, pretty there's probably some environmental, um, money budgeted in some of those, uh, soil borings, all those kinds of things, uh, make up the other soft costs. And typically, when you start out a project, when I first got hired, I always say to use about 25% uh, for soft costs, just figure that, depending on your financing and things like that. Well, the financing was taken care of out of other funds. So in this case, we're around 15% with the soft costs, uh, which is good, uh, pretty normal, it just came out that way and it continues to work out that way. We loaded up, um, some projects where we know we're gonna need a lot of, uh, fixtures, furnishing and equipment and, uh, uh, technology, so we bumped that up where we thought it was appropriate. So the total project cost for the North Annex, we're looking at about 9.7 million is our target.
What do you think that project, what's your expected completion date on that?
Completion date on that is around, we're targeting March of 2020. It's about 12 months of, uh, I'm sorry, about 16 months of construction.
When are you gonna start getting into the old portion of that? How, I mean, how are you working on it? I know you're about ready to move around in a couple of weeks on the new building?
Yeah, the new building, we're mobilized and we started the erosion control, um, I'm sorry, that's on the site. What we bid, there's two bid packages in the North County. Bid package number one consists of all the site work and the structure, masonry and those, and closing the building. In January, the drawings will be complete and we'll put that out on the street for bid, that's the rest of the portion. So I would say that in, uh, February, we should start on the interior renovations and, you know, the duration takes a little longer than normal, because we have to sequence it and keep things operating. So while we're building one, we'll move out everybody into the new one and then ba- you know, renovate the existing, so.
Especially when we get into the judges' chambers.
Right.
Uh, 'cause we're gonna be adding an additional chamber, so we'll finish the new chamber first, move a judge in there, go into his chamber, do that, move someone in there, and then the last one will renovate that. So that's, in this building per se, the, the schedule is much, is a little bit longer just because of the sequencing, as Scott's talking about, of trying to, 'cause this building's gonna stay open while we're, we're doing all this, so.
Well, it's all said, there'll be four courtrooms?
Three.
Three courtrooms?
Right. Two now.
Yeah, I've been in a time or two.
Yeah. Yeah, and this also includes our half of the trustee building as well, too.
Are we, we're doing the building, of the building?
Correct. But in our numbers, in our numbers, we're only reflecting our pro-rata share of that building that we have the agreement with, and that we have a sort of a separate agreement, a separate budget for that project to operate it, but we, we didn't throw it into this budget 'cause we thought it would be too confusing to, to follow. And they have their own sources of funds, too, so.
So that total cost, Jeff, is gonna be maybe two more million than what we have, or 1.5 maybe higher, with their budget added on to that?
Their, their costs are around $2 million.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that total cost?
That includes soft costs.
I was just looking at the total investment for portages, then around 11 and a half million dollars.
Yep. That's correct.
Okay.
So right now, um, we feel pretty good about where we're at. The, the bid package two, number that you see in there, uh, in line 101, is based on our estimates, and we've been coming in very well with our estimates to bids lately, but with a little bit of a factor in there, so. I'll move on if there's not any questions, any more questions with North Annex, I'll go on to 157 Franklin, where it's also gonna include the 911. The building is in purchase, so you'll see that bump in the soft cost there, of course, when you deduct that out, we're still at about 15% soft cost on that. Uh, the total budget for that right now, what we're anticipating is about 3.3 million. Um, we're carrying about a $250,000 contingency, um, we're gonna carry in the lease equipment as you go down, we decided lately to increase that to about 375,000, uh, because, again, 911 offices, the number of offices, each one of those offices are gonna have to be equipped. Um, and everything else, uh, again, we, we feel good about that right now, it's in design, we're looking at, hopefully, uh, in February, bidding that, March, somewhere in that time, if we can accelerate that, we'll, we will. Ideally, we'd like to bid it all as one package, 911 and the offices together, but we'll see how that works out and answer some questions as we go along.
So the question, I guess, is, so you're saying then, what's the soonest, like 4D? What's the soonest 4D could be in there?
I can only answer from a construction standpoint, if we do bid this in March and, and give the notice to proceed in March, we're looking at about 12 months construction overall.
For the whole building?
For the whole building.
Okay, so what's the soonest we could get 4D in there?
It'd be probably 2020.
Now, what's the, soonest we could get 4D in there?
What's the easiest part of that building, then? Obviously, the offices, I would think, then, when it-
The difficult part of this building is 911.
Right, so, yeah, so to Dan's point, the offices are gonna be fairly simple to, to really get going.
Yeah, they should be, because you have perimeter walls up and things like that, so, um, I don't know the scope of that, or what that's going to be, to answer your question, but, you know, if it was a six-month build-out, um, you're looking at latter part of 2019, it would be possible, um.
But with 911 being on the fourth floor, it's really gonna be hard to-
Right, we're gonna, you're gonna have all your-
You're gonna access that building until 911's done, I mean, it's just, it-
So, okay.
Right?
Yeah, utilities-wise, your mechanicals, you're gonna be, you're gonna be running through everything.
So if you get a legal opinion back that says we can get out of the lease with 4D, what are you gonna do?
Sorry?
Figure it out?
Okay. And if we took a virtual trip back in time, when we talked about the purchase of 157 Franklin, and the, and the question was asked of when would we be able to move 4D, it wasn't the end of 2019. I gotta tell you, that wasn't the answer that was given, so.
That was also pre-development, too, Dan.
I understand.
There's a lot of moving parts here.
I understand, but, but you have to understand that we're, we're struggling with this, um, with this 4D lease problem, and we're running on the assumption that we can get them in there sooner than later, and we've-
That was one of the reasons that we went ahead and purchased, vote, in fact, that's why I voted for it.
So, yeah, I, I would like to know, I would like to know.
I think that building serves so many purposes, I think we're kinda off track with just the lease, I think that-
I would like to know, to my point, this isn't even about the building necessarily, I would like to know, to my point, if you get an opinion back, and I assume we're going to be getting one relatively soon, since we need some options brought to us as to where the 4D office could go sooner than later. That's, that's what I'm saying. And if you're telling me that this building isn't gonna have space available for them till close to the end of 19, we need an alternate plan. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I mean, there's some, yeah, I mean, when it was sold, there was cost savings to it by being able to move our offices over there.
Sure.
I mean, that was part of the discussion, so I think.
No, that's certainly still the plan, it's, uh, that we'll, that we'll see. I mean, at this point, I think it's premature to talk about what may or may not happen till we determine, uh, the situ- situation with the lease, so it may or may not be advantageous for us to expedite the ability to move in or not, I mean, we-
Well, or find an alternate plan, if we're going to the effort of getting a legal opinion as to legality of the lease, and we've talked about that quite a bit, we probably ought to have a plan, what we're gonna do. I mean, maybe, maybe it doesn't involve this building, maybe it involves some other location, but the fact of the matter is, if we're going to the effort and expense of getting a legal opinion as to legality of the lease, we ought to have a plan as to what we're going to do if it, if the lease is, in fact, not enforced.
And that, that'll be up to the determination of the county, right? I mean, and we'd make that decision.
We have.
As to where and when, or if a plan is or isn't necessary.
No, they make the decision as to where.
I'm saying the county.
So, we say where.
With buildings.
Yeah, so I'm, so the commissioners are in front of us, so I'm asking them, the people who would make that decision, that if, to maybe start thinking, if you haven't already, about an alternate plan. I personally don't think that's such a crazy request. We've talked about the problems we have with the lease, or at least some of us, you've requested copies of long-term contracts because of it, we probably ought to be discussing or at least considering alternatives if, in fact, the road leads us down that. Now, if it doesn't, then I guess we've not, we're no-
It's always good to have a plan, and I'm sure they've, they've heard that request.
I would assume they have.
What were you gonna say, Scott? You were gonna say?
No, I was gonna say, I think I understand, we're anticipating the legal opinion early next week, and so we're trying to get that executive set next Wednesday. If, well, we're gonna know here in short order, depending on what it says, I understand what you're saying.
That's all part of the executive session, where we talk strategy, and you were invited to that executive session, so we can talk strategy.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking you to unveil the grand plan now, Jeff, I'm saying that I expect one, so I, I understand the notion of an executive session. I've been through quite a few, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I know, I know what constitutes an executive session, and I know it doesn't. So, and I also know that as the fiscal body of this county, that we have every right in the world to ask you to come up with a plan, because we didn't sign that lease, you understand, and we weren't even told it was signed, you understand, and we found out about that lease years later, you understand. So, if I had, if I'm sounding specific, but if I'm, if I'm sounding specific, it's because I'm trying to be specific. Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, I guess that building, and I haven't been, you guys have been in it, I'm sure, Matt's been in it, what is it, what's the inside, they, the previous owner-
Bare concrete walls and bare concrete floors.
Down to the spug.
I mean-
No stubs.
No spug.
There's no stub, no stub.
There's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be brought in, we, we're approving IT, uh, we're gonna be running IT fiber from this building to that building, we're gonna be running it from the courthouse to that building, so then the county will be on a, a total IT loop, uh, for our IT, so we're doing some infrastructure things that take a lot of time, uh, to, to bring into the building. Um, so there's, there's a lot of work, there's, uh, the, the basement there is gonna be extremely complex, uh, with a lot of different things, storage areas and other things that we're working through right now, so it's, there's a lot going in there.
I guess what I'm asking, is there, if we get into the position that we could do what we said we were gonna do to begin with and save this money, is there a chance, with all that space, we could temporarily move them into an area while we're beginning to work in other areas? Is that an option?
We'll figure it out.
It's necessary, sure.
At the end of the day, the answer is, if we get a legal opinion and we can-
Well, how, I mean, how would you know, Mike? I'm asking-
I'm saying it's necessary, I mean, it makes, it makes sense to me.
We're gonna have to come up with a plan if that's what happens.
Well, it's just, it's just my personal opinion, but construction, I don't think we wanna rush destruction.
Well, and to, and to-
Not rushing the construction, we're gonna need a temporary area.
Well, and then we have three months to come up with a temporary area, and we-
We don't have three months, we, we-
We just have to, yeah. We pay that year at least, twice a year, at least, so we have-
To Jeff Good's, Commissioner Good's point, if we're going to discuss the specifics of our plan, we probably wanna do that at the executive. And we'll work it out, yeah. All right, can we, um, move to the next, the Expo Center now, or are we still working on the 157, I'm sorry? Did everyone have their questions answered on the 157 Franklin?
No, but-
Well, more later. All right, to the Porta County Expo Center, please.
Porta County Expo Center, I think you can take a look at column line F there, that's our update, um, things are going very well there as far as budget and, uh, the bids coming in, um, we have encountered many problems, as we anticipated, we had a pretty healthy contingency to start that project and, um, long ago, and we obviously moved some of that contingency up into the pending changes. So, things such as, uh, conduits in the concrete, the existing concrete slab, um, that we have to take care of, we anticipate it, but you don't know, so we did put a very healthy contingency, uh, and right now, we're trending, uh, we're expecting, I think there's a prom there in May, so we have to be ready for that prom, um, so I would think things will wrap up by, by that time, May of 2019. Yes, and when you look at the, uh, budget, this is one of those that, um, we believe is trending under budget, so obviously, that's a good sign. Um, any questions on the Expo, now we'll have to talk about-
So the prom's in May, you said that, you, so when do you think it'll be done?
June. We'll be ready for the prom, though.
Okay.
Done, done, as they say in Chicago.
Okay.
Yeah, but we will be, we're working diligently to have that place ready in-
And we got kinda the virtual tour from the Expo Center, so we got a picture of that.
There, right now, we, we're starting the drywall, set up studs and drywall.
So we've got some steel set outside, too, that's pretty nice.
It's moving pretty good. Any questions on the Expo? And then we'll move into the courthouse, the, um, courthouse, we bid both packages, uh, one was the exterior, the masonry restoration and the windows and some of the site work, and then later we came in and, uh, have some interior renovations, restroom upgrades. Numbers came in good there, um, actually, again, that's another one we're trending under budget, um, we expect to wrap up the site here in December, masonry restoration is complete, windows probably finish up in spring, there'd be, they're special windows, so it takes a little longer to fabricate, um, and we'll be starting some of the restroom renovations, just again.
Can you elaborate on the partnership between the city and you guys over there? I know you were talking about some parking changes and stuff.
You wanna talk about the-
Yeah, I mean, we're, at the end of the day, Valparaiso had enough land along Lincolnway to, uh, add 17 diagonal parking spaces along Lincolnway, which then throughout, how we enter for the sheriff and the prisoners will be coming off of Franklin now, uh, and then they'll be also turning in for the fenced-in compound for the judges and, uh, people there that are in there. So we've been working with city, uh, on that, uh, and, you know, their border works for all the re- reconfigurating that we're doing downtown, and they're gonna be upgrading a lot of their sidewalks around the, uh, two ends of the courthouse as well, too, so.
Jeremy wants a, a tower on the top of that building.
He wants the clock tower still there, yeah, but, uh, only reason I commented on that is 'cause I heard from, uh, Valpo Engineering that they were, uh, really enjoying working with you guys on the project, and they said it was really moving smoothly, and so, I thought that you guys should hear.
So any offices, are we moving anybody out of that building? Who are we moving out specifically?
Adult probation will move out.
That's right.
Well, they're, they're there, they're here, they're, they're in three places, uh, and then the prosecutor will be moving out.
Totally out of there.
Totally out of there, so right now, how, uh, it's laying out, we fi- we just finalized 911 layout last week, we, or two weeks ago, we finalized adult probation and prosecutor last week.
There's a lot of discussion about the toilets for prosecutors, I understand, so we get all that ironed out, how many toilets they get and private toilets.
Yeah, it, we, we've worked through all those issues, um, you know, and then, you know, in, in, in talking about what, you know, you were pushing back on earlier, um, this courthouse, we're gonna have some space in there when we get everybody moved out of there, to where we're gonna have another alternative to, to put someone else in there if we need to, but again, we can't put anybody in that building until we get everybody out of that building. Um, so, um, that's, that's sort of part of the, um, the strategy that we're trying to work through right now, um.
So as the, yeah, and so, well, to that point about moving out, so what's, what's the timeline of these offices moving out? I mean, is there gonna be a grand exodus?
Yes.
So they're not like, you're not taking one out and then space will become available?
It may be aged out, but-
Right.
We're anticipating, basically, the office space getting done at the same time.
Okay.
Getting everything set up, getting the IT, getting the furniture, and then doing the, the grand march over.
Do you guys have an estimated completion date on that courthouse?
Um, the interior renovations, we expect to be done in probably February, and that's just the restroom renovations and things like that, and the only thing that really is gonna be going on later in the year would be the windows because of that procurement.
Getting them.
And the weather, so that'll be probably completed in the spring.
We, we changed some of the HVAC, uh, issues in there, too, didn't we address some of that stuff, or we were addressing some of that?
That was addressed several years ago, when we put a new big rooftop unit up there, and it was also done at the same time this building was done.
Correct.
And the other thing to point out, too, in 911, adult probation and prosecutor, those spaces will all have new office furniture as well, too, uh, because the office configurations and the type of, uh, layouts we're now going to are gonna require, uh, furniture to fit that space, and the furniture that they have now, uh, throughout there is pretty much hobbled together, so that's sort of what also takes a little bit of additional time on doing these projects, 'cause you have a whole furniture, um, you know, FF and E, furniture fixtures and equipment placement that we're gonna have to do, which takes a lot of time and coordination, so.
Right.
Part of the strategy of moving some of these offices was to lessen the foot traffic in the old courthouse, too, right?
Well, and then where the prosecutor is right now, is a mirror image of Judge, uh, the Judge Clymer's office across the hallway where the prosecutor is, that is a mirror, uh, footprint of that judge's chamber, so, uh, once we get everybody moved out, there's the possibility there that we could add another judge's chamber, uh, in that building, uh, to go right across from the other, and that's what our intent was, is to, um, you know,
Put a space that's inevitably open.
Right.
Or when we need it.
Magistrates, what, I mean, there's a lot of-
Who knows?
Exa- yeah.
And have you talked to Sheriff, moving 911 out of that building, does he have any wish, dream of what he wants to do with that space?
We talked, uh, last week, we're gonna be meeting with them, uh, we're not to that point yet, um, we, him and I did have a discussion, uh, about, you know, would he have the possibility of maybe moving the coroner out there? Um, it makes a lot of sense, uh, from what we were talking about, but we haven't, uh, we, we've chatted about it, but we haven't gotten specific, uh, yet, but that's to come.
Just looking, I imagine there'll be a little bit of cost to do whatever.
Yep.
Awesome.
And that's part of, when you guys were asking us about our contract budget earlier, we're gonna have to do some layouts and some other things in some of these other ancillary places to be able to lay these things out, and that's sort of why those contract budget numbers were in our budget before. We, we have a lot of repair work to do as well, too, when we start putting it all back together, so.
Does anyone else have any questions?
That's good for now, appreciate it very much.
Thank you for your job, Scott, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott.
That wasn't too bad, was it, Scott? You just had to wait till, till we got there.
Wait for it?
All right, so next up, we have the CCD fund.
Yep.
Looks like we've got a decrease of 11,000.
That's a year of 11,000.
Just to be clear, that, uh, the state cut the budget last year by that amount, so we're quick back to that.
Are we building in there at all, now?
Sure, Scott.
CCD fund, is there any?
That's good.
Balance?
Nothing going in there, right?
But I'm hopeful that, that this amount, and with the cash balance that we're seeing, the state won't cut it next, next year. That'll be the first time in 2015.
Yeah, it cut last year by 13, right?
So that.
All right. Yeah, that sucks. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Yeah, first and second, any questions or comments?
Hi, he's, he's made my comment, I said it really sucked.
Do you like to say it again?
No, I'm good now, man.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have a merger, mer-
Emergency no proof.
Second.
Got a first, we got a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Garage fund, no changes.
Move.
Motion approved.
What? We're doing something?
We did that already.
Okay.
We're doing that.
Listen, the emergency, the garage, the zone of wildlife, let's just get them all, okay?
Yep, there you go.
We got a first, we have a second?
We got a first, we have a second?
Yes, second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So we got the county...what's that? CO revenue bond project. Where are you at? Where'd you go? We're down to 4801. 4801. CO revenue.
It's just a bond.
That's our bond. Any questions?
Motion approved.
No questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Hospital liability.
Motion approved.
Act, act.
Scott, on this one, is this our trailing liability fund?
Yeah.
So, and I know at one point I'd asked Harold to give us kind of a...so we're down to one. Do we need 350 in there?
It's okay to leave.
Yeah, I mean, it's...but we haven't...it's okay to leave anything anywhere. But we've...in 2017, we expended $40. In 2018, we've expended $287. So my question is...
How much over are we on a budget for a contract of that?
Whatever you want.
145 or something.
It would all depend on if there is a jury verdict or not anyway, so.
Right, so if we didn't have 350 in there, where would it go?
Hospital principal.
It's back to the principal?
Yep, and the one that's here.
So our...not...yeah, the one that we're down? Yeah. So...
Which one?
So if we took $300,000 out of there, it would go into the hospital, the...what's left of our...not our interest fund, right?
Our principal.
And how much is...I'm looking at the next one, which is hospital interest. And you're saying it doesn't go there, it would go to the principal?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, I think we should. I think we should take it down to $50,000.
Let's do it.
Do it.
If we...I mean, look, if a jury cleans their clock someday, we'll just have to move it back. Hey, do we have a motion? Down to 50? Down to 50. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Hospital interest, 4902. Looks like it's staying the same.
Move it through.
So we're not...if we increased our...if we increased our $200,000, Vicki, we're still going to leave the 550 in there for the insurance, right?
Right.
We're thinking that we probably need to leave that there, even if to get that down, we'd have to go way north of $200,000 increase, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll then only leave about $150 worth of value here.
Right, so we're...so that's our...we're hoping not to have to tap that.
But how are you spending out of it, when and how, though? I mean, do you want to...
Appropriate it to appropriations.
We're bringing the appropriations into the health fund on a quarterly basis.
So as it sits right now...
So what she...if the council were the director, she could pull from this one lap.
Right. That's, I guess, where the road was my...I guess it doesn't matter.
Well, we could.
But it's quarterly, right?
Daniel, what about it?
Hmm, no, I don't think...no, I don't think we want to right now. I think we should leave it right where it's at.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we should leave it right where it's at because I think that...that it's kind of...we're going to...we're going to need it. We're going to need it. There's no...there's no question on that one. So our next year...hopefully, next year, if we increase the $200,000 this year, our necessity for the 550 won't be...won't be quite so much. Okay, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any more questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I've got a question, I'm sorry. Can we go back to the liability fund? We lowered the budget, but does that money still...we didn't move it. I mean, that's a fund in and of itself that's got $350,000.
Part of the hospital.
Or is it part of the proceeds? It's...so then...
Where did it go?
It's going to...it's going to fall down into the hospital...the hospital sale proceeds. Now, does that...does that fund take a unanimous vote to spend mine?
So you don't want to move it in there.
No, guys.
That's what we just said, right?
No, 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 no. Vicki, I want to answer this question. Is there a separate fund holding trailing liability?
Is it a fund, or is it just where we just budgeted?
How much is in that fund?
We were just budgeting.
Thank you.
So that's how much is there.
Right.
We were budgeting 350.
Right.
So we assume this lawsuit was done, that 710, I believe by the original ordinance and hospital contract, will automatically reverse the hospital principal.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
All right, so that's just...we're just...all right.
Moving it sooner.
What is in hospital principal right now?
Like six?
Hundred or six million?
Million.
Million, okay.
It's still over 6 million.
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Okay, next up, we've got the hospital sale proceeds. So by reducing that 300,000, you need to move that down into there, then? Or does it just happen as a matter of course?
I think once that last lawsuit goes away...
Well, we just took 300,000 out of that line item. Where's it going to go?
It's just unallocated then, right?
It's just unallocated.
No, we don't think it works that way. But we're not...it doesn't work that way with this.
The way it would work is that still 700, whatever, thousand in there.
Yeah, unallocated.
With the way that with everything, that would work.
All right. It would just stay in there.
Yep, it's not going anywhere.
Anyone else have any questions on that?
No, I was conjuring up ideas, but...
Oh, Mr. Whitman. All right, next, we got the hospital sale proceeds. Looking for a motion?
Move.
Motion to a second.
We got a first, we got a second. Any questions or comments?
This is just ambulance service, correct?
Yep.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And last, we've got the cable franchise fund.
Okay, prove.
Second.
We have a first and second. Any questions or comments? What are we paying out of this?
Yeah, lease.
The 586 is the 911 payments to Motorola. The 64 is the money for 100,000.
Is our system 900 megahertz now? When you bring up Motorola, are we...is it all rolled out? 700? 700. Is it going now? Is it working? When is that going to be done?
We're asking the state the same question.
Really? The state we're waiting on?
We're having some issues with connectivity with AT&amp;T.
And to be clear, we're not having issues.
Yes, the state and AT&amp;T are having issues.
Infrastructure's done, though. The towers, all revenues.
Correct.
Yeah, and radios.
We were given a live date, September 18th, and what is it now? So we're on it.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. So roads and taxiways for 364,000. Where's that go?
100,000.
That's all 100,000?
Yeah.
It's our payment for that year.
Okay.
Because it's staged out over two, three years.
Gotcha. That's awesome. Is that the road repair? What's 100,000? I'm sorry.
So roundabout, it's...
We're improving widening intersections.
And that's going probably shaving the hill.
All the 700.
We're not doing that roundabout this year.
All the way almost to Lake County.
So we're going west 500...or 600?
Oh, okay.
600 west?
Yep.
Is that right?
There's like three intersections that are going to be upgraded. We're in the process now of acquiring right-of-way.
Where's the roundabout?
Getting some turn lanes. That's on highway, too. That's a state project.
We're going to have a roundabout in there.
On the five-way.
I love roundabouts. I'm a fool.
I'm just...
Now, I pop in a figure, but I love them.
It's a bad intersection.
Yeah.
It'll improve it.
Be shaving hills and some other things.
So there's no...there's not...as we say today, there's no...there's no proposal to widen 100,000 to four lanes or...
No.
Oh, no, no, no. This is just...
Intersections.
These are intersection repairs, widening for shoulders, shaving hills.
This is just 600 west going west, but is there...I mean, at one time, Biskowski'd come in and all that stuff.
This is just...the big part is shaving a lot of these hills down to where you can't...you know, how it's sort of...
Yeah.
Dan's worried it'd get close to his office, though.
Yeah, it's starting to...yeah, I had a wreck right in there one time, too, hitting it, so, I don't know. I'm with you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
You know, maybe, just to make the record clear, did you guys do a voice vote on hospital sale? Or do you think the roll call's been...
I think it was roll call. We didn't do a roll call. We just did a voice.
Yeah, did anybody...anybody vote against it?
No.
No.
Okay.
Hospital sale, I mean, do you want to have...
If you want a roll call, we'd be happy to do that.
No.
All right, well, thank you, guys. Did you guys have anything else?
We need to do it.
Did they do the foundation fund?
We're doing that.
Oh, you know, okay. Well, I had it out of order, so.
Okay.
Next, we'll do the foundation budget fund. 4922. We'll have to come back to quarter start.
All right, so the foundation, the old foundation. Are there any changes?
Not much.
There's one.
So are we just going to tackle these all at once? Is there any changes? There's the contracts, so yeah, up 135,000. So we've...because of the jail, we've had to raise it, is that right?
Yeah.
Because we have the contracts more. And then, again, guys, this is the one where we rolled it from the economic...are the... Keep changing that thing. To compensate for the bond payment. So this is one of those that we rolled over to...because we wanted that paid out of it. Do we have a motion to tackle any of these?
Move.
Are you moving...to tackle them all? Or just one at a time?
I have one question on the jail.
I'll make a motion on all of them.
Second.
All right. So we all...go ahead.
Yeah, what is the contractual services? What are...how much are you...
That's a jail medical contract.
Okay.
You think you can go do it for cheaper, though? You know, in her...
Well, I...
On retirement, maybe?
A lot more... So sorry, we're...this is kind of...that is kind of driven by the contract. And when we had the bond that is secured by the lit, we decided to put the bond payment inlet, and we pulled two things out of that into this. This is one of them. And they should be pretty close to the bond payment, actually.
Yeah.
But we're kind of at the mercy of a little bit of the contract on this. Well, I think, yeah, to reiterate, I keep hearing that we're spending county tax dollars to fund the county, and we made the change. We did that to... Well, we're always...we're always spending county tax dollars to fund the county.
I'll make that idea. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I'll take it. So what was your question? You lost me. You lost me at hello. I was thinking...
My question is that...
People keep saying that we're using foundation money to run the county and pay, for example, the medical contracts and stuff like that. But in reality, we are doing that, but the original plan was to use this...this fund to pay for the bond payment and stuff, and we switched it.
Bond payments come out of lit.
You got a better rate.
That's not originally how we answered it.
It had to do with the financing of the bond as to where we put it, and we were able to drive the interest rate down because of what accounting comes out.
Scroll down. Thank you. Scroll down, Vicki. Thank you for clarifying what I was saying. So we've got Opportunity Enterprises in there, right?
Mm-hmm.
For 50,000. Was there something you wanted to say from Opportunity Enterprises? It's 50...unless... Well, they're on the...they're on the next... No, but they're getting some money out of this, and we just made a motion for the whole budget, so maybe they want to have a word or two.
We've got Council on Aging and Family Services, like Dan's saying. We've got social services in there that we are funding.
Just a thought, so...
Not a bad idea.
Sorry, Laura.
Why do you still want to blow by it? I didn't want to blow...us do it, and then we're moving to the next thing, and...
It's all good, thanks.
Yeah.
So this is about our additional request. Do I understand that correctly?
No, this is about just the $50,000, correct? Yeah, but let me ask you a question. So you've got...we're supplementing your budget with $50,000 from the foundation. And I guess my...of course, the immediate first question is, why don't you give us some idea of what you've done with the money, which is your opportunity...this is your opportunity to shine, so let's make good of it.
Okay.
And then, maybe you could just for fun, before we...you know, we're not going to make decisions on, I don't think, on the additional tonight, I don't think, but maybe you can give us some idea of what...what that's for.
Okay. Well, if you call last year when you came...when we came up here, you said, "How's everything going?" And I said, "Everything's good at OE, right? What a difference a year makes." What a difference a year makes. We've had some massive changes that have occurred to our funding sources in this last year. One of them, and I did meet with some council members to talk about the issue there in regards to transportation and what's happened with the way that we can provide services. And it has had a very detrimental effect on our, on our financial situation, as well as for the services that are being provided to individuals in Porter County. To go into just a little more detail on that, what used to be a service that we could, people, the community could call in and we could provide to them, now has to be done through a system called Southeast Trans. And it's a call-in system to an eight hundred number that's based in Atlanta? Oh, my goodness. Atlanta. And so we've lost that personal touch completely. And the amount of trips that we're actually able to provide is about forty-seven percent less than what we were able to do last year. It's, it's a really kind of an ugly situation, and it's being dealt with in several different ways by our trade association, but it's even hit, it's hit the community. One of the nursing homes just the other day had a public town hall meeting that was attended by our state representatives, Chuck Mosley and Jim Presl, and just complaining and letting people know of the challenges that are happening and the services that are not being provided any longer. And it's, it's incredibly detrimental to our county at this point.
How are they not being provided anymore?
So it's, it's one of those things where they're dealing with people that come, are coming, calling in an eight hundred number, and they're getting people that don't know anything about the services and the providers that are here in Porter County. And so they're being told that there aren't any providers to be able to help them, they're being put on hold and having to wait for hours and hours to get services, they have been not picked up for rides that they're supposed to be receiving. There's providers that are coming out of the woodwork that we don't, we don't know who they are. And so people will call us and say, they're unmarked vehicles, we don't know who they are, we're not going to get in them.
What prompted that switch, if I could ask?
Well, what we're being told is it's a way to prevent Medicaid fraud. And so.
What's required by the state is what you're saying.
The state, yeah, that came from.
Yeah.
State broker, yeah.
Correct.
Has it, has it resulted in more people servicing that are servicing that do the service? Are you seeing competition arise, or?
We have not seen that, no. We don't know. We've heard too many, too many bad stories about it.
So we don't know who these people are that are coming up in unmarked vehicles?
Correct.
We have no idea?
We do not.
Who they are?
I think we do not know.
Don't you have, I mean, is there a licensing process that you would have to be approved before you can go up and?
Yes, there is a credentialing process, but it's, they've extended it out longer because there was a issue at the beginning. So not all the providers have to be fully credentialed until, I think, beginning of the calendar year.
Does this affect family, I'm sorry, Council on Aging?
I can't speak to that.
That, well, I wasn't asking you, I was asking through you. Does this affect Council on Aging?
We refused to participate. It was a dangerous demand that they were putting on there. Medicaid wise, we were only doing about one-fourth the number of rides that OE was doing.
Oh.
So it's going to cost us about eight to ten thousand dollars, but it was, it's just.
It's not worth the effort.
So you refused, so what happened to the court, you know, you said you were doing about a quarter of them, so who's picking those people up that you're no longer doing?
I told them they could still ride with us for free. You guys are paying for it.
Sounds like we got some problems, don't we?
Well, that wasn't the answer.
Sounds like you got.
I didn't see that coming.
The state is requiring anyone who is receiving Medicaid.
Correct.
To go through this eight hundred number, and so that, because there's everybody on Medicaid.
So this is a state appointed clearinghouse, basically.
And it's located where?
Originally out of Atlanta.
So tell me again, your ridership before this compared to your ridership now?
No numbers?
And I know we met with you and you went through that, but maybe, I don't know if everyone.
Boy, I don't understand that.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. So back in March, we had a hundred sixty-four trips, April, one sixty-two, and May was about one thirty-two. And then when it started in June, dropped down to sixty-eight, sixty-nine in July, we saw eighty-eight in August, eighty-six in September. So, yeah, we're still at that.
So that's because some of your people are refusing to ride with the driver, the transport driver that's.
They may be refusing to deal with Southeast Trans, they didn't want to deal with the call center. Another provider may have been assigned.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, so how is that, they call a call center and we got no idea who there's, they could be saying, go to A, or call B, or call C, you have no idea.
Right, and they'll call us and schedule with us, and sometimes they'll give us a pickup that it's nowhere near in our geographic region to do. You know, it's.
How do they choose what company to use? Is one any cheaper than the other? Is it pricing?
No.
They all pay the same.
Correct.
Or the state.
The idea with this, it was supposed to make things billing-wise easier because the state's dealing with one person versus all of the other providers, and it's to prevent the fraud.
The ridership you gave us, is there a last year's comparison to this year's?
I just looked at the most recent four months compared to these recent four months.
Prior.
Yeah.
So dollar-wise, what's that cost you?
We're projecting about a fifteen thousand dollar decrease.
Okay.
In that.
Correct.
Just in that part of it.
In that, what do you, so you said just in that?
Just in that part of it, mm-hmm.
Do you have another problem?
Um, well, we have several problems, actually.
Oh, I have? With your request that we're talking.
Um, the, the other part of that is the drivers that we have, and keeping staff. We are, we're experiencing something we've never experienced before with a staffing crisis. And I think probably any of you that are in business understands that it's very difficult to hire people. But right now, our drivers are making ten dollars an hour, and there is no one else being paid that. We went into this year with a deficit budget of a hundred and nine thousand dollars without any raises for our staff. So we are, we are really struggling this year to try and just make things neat in any way. We're hoping the Southeast Trans will eventually go away. We don't know how long that will take, or if it will really happen. But our trade association is working hard to support us on that part of it.
Does the state cut other money from you guys?
They have, we've lost some services in regards to our job placement services and how we can do that anymore.
How about your group homes and your semi-independent living and all that? How's that funding? Is that okay?
The funding is still there for those. The challenge is the staffing.
Maybe once in a while, I read something that the state is contemplating changing the funding for group homes.
Correct. They would love for group homes to go away. They want everybody to go into a supported living site, which means they're living in apartments throughout the community, not in a home that's owned by us. So, yes, they are trying to do that. There's definitely.
Well, that would be your, that would be, that would be tremendously detrimental to you.
Absolutely.
That would be sort of a.
It's difficult now, our homes are not performing the way they did because they're not referring people for that service as much anymore. It, that, that in itself is another challenge.
Go ahead.
And because we can't just, we're not like a restaurant, we can't close a section of it or anything when you're dealing with people, you have to serve them no matter what.
How many group homes?
Our overtime hours.
How many group homes do you have now?
Seven.
How many supported living sites?
Um.
Twenty-five.
Twenty, okay, I can say twenty-six, right? Twenty-five, twenty-six, in that range. Our overtime hours last year were seventy-one thousand five hundred hours. And so that's equivalent of thirty-four and a half.
It's a good thing you don't give comp time, so that people would work for the prosecutor.
That would be interesting.
Have you been in contact with the state?
Continue.
And what is their, what is their, hey, it's working everywhere great, you guys just need to get on board, or they're hearing?
You know, our trade association has a governmental affairs committee, and I do serve on that committee, where we work closely with the legislators and we're trying to make them aware of all of the concerns and issues that we have. And of course, our local, Ed Charbonneau has been very instrumental in helping us through a lot of this, but it's a challenge.
Do you think it's going to be corrected?
Not in any short time. I don't expect that.
Well, this twenty-five thousand's really not even a finger in the hole in the dam, honestly.
No, we work really hard. I, you know, we don't like to come with our hands out. We work really hard to generate as much as we can. Our, our development department has raised one point five million dollars this year through our donor relations and through our grants and our fundraising efforts. You know, we just opened a store in Myers. You're aware of that? You know, so we're going to make so much money there that we'll never have to come back again.
That's a great plan.
That would be our goal. Our shredding department's doing really well, and it's generating, so we're trying in every way that we can outside of using just state funding.
So this, this raises an interesting question or thought, not so much for Opportunity Enterprises, but for us. So if we do get into a situation where we want to increase the foundation budget, do you think that's a discussion that we have to have at least at the foundation level?
Yes. Because I think right now, what we're, what I think, technically, you're proceeding under the last year's budget.
Yeah.
And that's fine, because that's been approved.
Yeah, we kind of chatted at the foundation that we were going to, Mike and I were going to put forward last year's foundation budget, so I think from the foundation's perspective, they were expecting that to be the budget.
But if you wanted to, if you were to raise it, I think you'd have to.
What are you, what are you talking about doing?
Yeah.
She's, no, she's, she's asking.
Fifty thousand.
She's asking for an addition, the fifty thousand's already there.
No, and the additional fifty thousand.
I think she's asking for an additional twenty-five.
If you move over a couple tabs, there is, I don't know why it wasn't in, it wasn't reflected in this foundation budget, but in the tab, there's a requested increase.
For twenty-five thousand?
For twenty-five thousand.
So you want to take that twenty-five thousand and put it in the foundation?
I don't, I'm not saying whether or not, they're requesting it, and since we're, because here's the thing, we supplement, I mean, you may read on Facebook that we don't fund any social services out of our hospital investment money. Anybody that says that is a complete ass or a liar. We do. We fund quite a bit of social services from our foundation budget because we care about social services in this county, and we don't leave people behind. So they're one of the minutes in here.
And we continue to find ourselves at the other end of the state as they cut, you know. I know Commissioner Good like to say, you know, at the federal level, we're, we're giving unfunded mandates from the federal level. We're also, we also are always holding the bat when the state cuts social services. What are we going to do? So, and this is, this is another.
But we've stepped up, and so their request is, we've got fifty thousand that we budgeted before, so Mike and I put the same budget over for consideration. They want an additional twenty-five thousand for some of the reasons that they just explained. My question was, logistically, how, not just for their request, but for anybody that might be requesting, that's getting my Family Youth Services Bureau or Council on Aging, if we wanted to alter that, would you think we would need to go back to the foundation, or would you, I don't know that we need to, but wouldn't you want to go back to the foundation if we're going to alter the budget that we told the foundation we were going to send forward?
We want to boil down to seven hundred thousand and go to the foundation.
For the twenty-five.
And just table it.
Well, this is a general fund.
We got a.
No, no, no. This is out of the foundation.
Even at seven hundred thousand?
No, the seven hundred.
No.
We probably.
Seven hundred is out of the general fund.
General fund, okay. So seven hundred comes out of general fund, cover the fifty thousand, they're asking for twenty-five thousand more, they asked for twenty-five out of the general fund, Dan suggests that if we do that.
I should be saying, they're.
Twenty-five will come from foundation. Well, we should, here's the thing, so they're, the money they get through from the general fund is different. It's not like any other budget. If we, yeah, if we cut their budget, we cut the money we get for our, our draw from the state, correct, Vicki?
Yep.
We do.
Okay, yes. So it's different.
We do the credit that we give.
Right, okay.
But to Andy's point, the request is.
So we don't, so we don't want to put it, I don't think we do want to put, if we're ever going to increase these folks, particularly Opportunity Enterprises, the way they're funded, I think it's cleaner here. I think it's easier here. So if that's what we're going to do at some point, we need to address that with the foundation. That's my point. I mean, we could find someplace in the general fund.
Right.
Can I make a motion that we approve the seven hundred thousand, and you can discuss further time with the foundation for the extra twenty-five?
Well, we're still on the foundation budget.
Right.
I mean, that's moving forward into.
Well, but we, we flipped over so they could talk about the.
Well, we do have a first and a second on the table. So are there any questions about the, or comments about the seven hundred thousand?
Now we're on the general fund.
We're on the general fund.
OE general.
But we supplement that.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Vicki?
Yeah.
So I understand how the seven hundred thousand works.
I know what you're going to ask.
Why, is there a limit?
That's, that's a great question.
I don't believe there is. Am I wrong?
The limit, the limit is going to be based on our maximum levy. And to be as conservative as possible, I included the twenty-five increase in the maximum levy calculation, and I believe that it will, it will need the state approval.
So it's smarter to put it in the general fund.
It's possible to decide if you want to.
And I just, and just to be clear, because I know, I know there are people confused. To be clear, OE is different than all the other non-for-profits.
Severn Porter Stark.
I'm sorry.
So how much do we get from the state now? Are you guys saying that it'll increase twenty-five thousand? That's the question. It depends on our maximum levy, I don't think it's okay.
So the limit is going to be based on how much you're going to end up with your general fund, and then the other factors that come into our maximum levy limitation. But I added the twenty-five into that.
And you think we're okay doing it?
Yes, and I'll argue with the state over it if I'm.
So do you guys want to withdraw your motion?
Oh, man.
Fine.
Withdraw, okay. Do we want to cover that now, and someone make a motion for the seven twenty-five?
Well, we're addressing it already, we might as well. I make a motion to accept it.
Seven twenty-five? A second. We got a first, we got a second. Any further discussion or comments? Now, Vicki, if, if that turns out to be wrong.
Yes, yes.
She said, I was going to say, you got to let us know. Because I was under the, I was under the mistaken impression that we were there, and that we, and that we need, that we would not, it would, the extra twenty-five thousand, we have to treat it differently in the general fund. But if that's not the case, then this is the answer.
Based on my numbers, we're still in that.
All right.
Okay.
Anyone else have any further questions or comments?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Now back to the foundation. So is there anything that Family Youth Services or Council on Aging want to say? I mean, you want to come up? This is your.
We're back to the foundation budget.
We're paying, yeah, we're paying.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting through the long night.
Please do a polite.
With Jeremy and Dad, it always is.
I mean, you guys, you guys can hang out here. No, they're not asking for increases.
We're done, man.
No, no, we are. You're. Have a good night, guys.
Good evening.
There you go.
And we are not asking for any additional funds. And, and I felt like I needed to come up here since this is going to be the last time that I will be presenting information on the agency, as I will be retiring, and of course, you know, Belinda Giorgiev will be taking over for me. We're still, we're still running sixteen programs, we are still on track to serve close to four thousand this, this year, when all those programs are running fairly smoothly, and I could sit here and talk about additional cuts that we have had too. I don't know how much, you want to hear about that? I will comment about Department of Child Services, which, the report that came out, of course, that everybody has read about in the newspapers, especially Indianapolis, has done a lot of talking about that. They have decided that they're going to rework all of their service standards, which is the way we get paid, and we won't know about that until that request for funding comes out probably in a few months. So hopefully, they won't reduce the amount of per diem that we're able to bill for the services that we do for the kids in the community. And, and if that happens, then I'm sure that Belinda will be back to talk to you about that. But I hopefully anticipate they don't pull money out of the system with all of the press that they've gotten on what's happened here recently.
So if we took a sort of a historic view here over the last couple of years, have you had services that you've had to cut?
Yes.
Tell us what those services are.
Um, we had to cut the Learning Place, and that was because the way the funding was developed by the state, and it was developed in, in an attendance kind of a fashion, and you can't have staff there, and, and of course, children at risk don't always attend the best when it comes to school, and so, because we could not keep the attendance, and we did not get cooperation from one of the major schools in providing bus service, we had to close that program. There are many other programs that are hanging out there right now. Our Toc Shop is one of them, that we've been cut a lot by the state on that. We've done a lot of development work out in the community, trying to do fundraising. In fact, we're working on a fundraiser right now, Pick and Treat for Tocs, that we're trying to make sure that we can keep that program going, because those are baby items necessary, you know, to keep babies healthy when they're very young.
I thought the state was supposed to inject money. They were going to spend more money.
Yeah, they're spending more money in substance-related issues and, and not necessarily in the services that we're continuing to provide, which is counseling and those kind of things, mentoring in the schools, all of those kind of programs.
Is there other agencies that have picked up some of the slack or some of those programs that you guys have provided?
No, the, when, when you get into reading and you talk to other providers such as us, there is a lack of providers out here. People can't, agencies that need help for their kids, such as probation, Department of Child Services for those kids that are being pulled out of their homes, and I can talk just a little bit about that in a minute, there's not, there's not enough providers out there for the services because they're not paying, they're not able to pay enough to keep staff. That's where you all have come in so wonderfully over the years, is that you've been able to patch in, in those areas where we can't, we can't afford to run those programs without some help. Another program, our Healthy Families Program, you know, and, and the state is pretty slick here, is that they rolled that grant for another two years so that they didn't have to have us present a new budget with increased dollars. So there's no way for us to bill for what the additional, you know, increase, it costs, gas costs more, the employees have to use their own vehicles, those cost more, they won't give us any more for mileage. So, you know.
Do you feel like we're giving you an adequate amount of money?
The answer is no.
No, I mean, you know.
Is that the?
We are not.
On behalf of everyone that's coming down on us.
No.
I'm sorry. True. Good point. We could, we could always provide better services, we could always open the Learning Place again if you would like to step forward and try to, try to provide funds for that. That was, that was the biggest loss that I had in my career. I ran the Learning Place, and when we had to close the second one, and that was based solely on one school system, ran us out of business on that one, broke my heart. But I do want to give you a little update on.
What school system ran you out of business?
Portage.
Rivas.
Valpo Community Schools, I want to go on record, Valpo Community Schools stepped I want to go on record, Valpo Community Schools stepped up, contacted the Portage schools and said, "We will send our buses over to get the Portage students." And they would not allow that. That was Dr. Patasha offered to do that for us. And they would not allow that to happen.
Now, you got that on record, Dan.
I'm so sorry. You were a wonderful help, I know. You stood by me on that, so I appreciate it.
See, that's who I was leading this to, Jeremy. Give you your moment.
He did try to help us, if he did.
She works hard. I know that she works hard. You're going to be sorely missed, but obviously...
You are going to be, yes.
Thank you. I don't want to forget to give you an update, though, on CASA because when I was here introducing Belinda and our program manager talked about the numbers, at that point, we had... The numbers had kind of tapered off, and that is not the case. I've talked to her today, and there is now another situation going on with them. So after all that report got released in July, there were no children removed from their homes in July in Porter County. Don't quite understand that because we know what goes on sometimes. In August, there were six. September, we have had 22 children removed and two days, five. So in the month of October. So those numbers are starting to increase again. And we do have, because they have done a wonderful job going out and getting CASAs, and they are out in the schools, as you suggested. We don't have a waiting list and all children. However, the new crisis is that there's not enough foster homes in Porter County. And over half of the Porter County children are now living in Lake and LaPorte County in foster homes there. And that causes additional problems for our CASAs because they don't necessarily step into this thinking they're going to drive to Gary and they're going to drive to Michigan City and some of the other areas. Hasn't caused anything yet. Those people are extremely dedicated to the children they serve, but it costs us extra money because we still have to go out to all those homes. And, you know, that's additional mileage and all that stuff. So I'm sure that Department of Child Services is working their own plan for foster homes, but that is a crisis that we're dealing with now. We're having to send our kids out of county.
Wow, alright. Well, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Thank you very much on behalf of the board and my employees. We appreciate the support that you have given us over the years. Our agency could not do what we did. I will be around a little bit next year. I have a specific set of duties that I'm going to do for the agency, but Belinda will be taking over everything else. And thank you again.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. All your years.
Bruce, you want to talk about aging?
Sure. I'm on that now. I'm 70, Dan. Yes, I opened my mouth and spucked it out there. I'm sorry. Ellen's right. That Southeast Trans thing is... You call an 800 number and they take the information down and then they assign an email, send it to you, and they say, "You've got to pick up on next Wednesday at 8:00 in the morning." You now have got to figure out if you can fit that pickup in. And then if you don't pick it up, you email them back, "No, that I can't." So now you've got a couple of communications that's got to go back and forth. And people are expecting a ride, and then one ride doesn't show up. And what I said, you guys pick up 56% of our transportation budget already. Seniors ride for a dollar if they've got a dollar. As you can see, the fares are $14,000 is all we collect for the seniors. Disability rides for free. So I've had my few Medicaid clients call me and say, "Bruce, I can't get picked up and I can't afford, you know, $15 a ride." I said, "Fine. You're on disability. You ride for free. You just call in when you need the ride and we're going to pick you up and we're just not filing for Medicaid." Now, Medicaid paid us a whopping $11,000 last year, so we weren't talking about a lot of money. So, and when... I hate to say this, but we're paying our drivers a fair wage.
Yes.
We're paying them $1,250 an hour. So Ellen is training the drivers and they're ending up working for us after a year. So there's no competition between $1,250 and $10 an hour. So I feel sorry for her, but I have qualified drivers and they stay with us. Now, we don't have insurance, and I think they have some benefits that fit in there so it's not a whole $2.50 gap. Like I told you last year, we saved $50,000 by changing the maintenance provider. And I told you we were going to add a bus. We have added a bus. So now, instead of running seven buses, we're running eight buses. And our ridership went from a little over $20,000 to $23,000. So we're providing $23,000 rides with the additional bus being out there. And because gas has stayed low, we still have been able to make all of the... You know, not feel the pressure, I think, that Ellen is feeling because we've been able to... Our budget has been able to be solvent every year. In fact, we've turned the buses over as soon as they're eligible to be turned over, so we're doing, using new vehicles. And my goal right now is, I think, is if we can stay with the gas where it's at, we're going to try to expand to eight and a half or nine buses. Put another bus out there and see if we can pick up another $2,000 or $3,000 people because they're calling, they need the rides. So...
And that all depends, though, on the price of gas.
Well, gas is a large player in that right now. But, I mean, we're still finishing the year with a little bit of a surplus. You know? I mean, if you can't find $10,000 for Ellen, I can give you $10,000. I can turn $10,000 back in if you want to take it.
Let's make an adjustment.
I don't know.
I think we found $25,000 more. We'll make it work.
Okay. Well, yeah, we had a... Oh, you did? We didn't? Okay. I'm sorry. I opened my mouth again. Anyway, after taking her drivers, I mean, I just, you know, it's funny you can't speak to me anymore, so, you know. No, things are going well. I mean, we served 1,400 clients in Energy Assistance last year. We ran the program from the beginning of November all the way to May, which nobody else in the county or even Lake County was doing that. And we gave out more money than we've ever given out before because we were committed to helping the poor people. We're now running over 330 people, clients, that are in the Section 8 housing program. Most of the people in Lake County, you know, one person manages maybe 160 clients. We're doing... One lady's doing 330 for us. You know, I mean, just because of the efficiency that we can bring to the program. Energy is, I mean, the ramp building program. If you would say, "We'd like to give you some money for the ramps." I've got 10 ramps that we're not going to get to this year, and we've got all 20 of them done already because we've got, I don't know if you've seen, the Ford Motor Service team that's out there. They provide all of the labor. All I have to do is to come up with the cost for the material. And there are tons of people out there that are locked in their home because they don't have the ability to get down the steps. You know, we're doing a couple of them in Portage this next week. Material is about $1,200 to do a ramp, you know? So I'm always trying to scrape up. Anderson Foundation gave me some money. I think we had $15,000 and then the Ford threw in some money. I mean, that would be an ideal program to help some seniors. We manage the United Ways Emergency Assistance Fund, $35,000 when people get in the binds. So you've got to remember, we're a social... Almost, our transportation is not transportation, it's a social service. We're doing people to dialysis, the room clinic, all of the doctors. We're going to St. Agnes. We're not talking about people that have resources, but we're talking about people that don't have resources. We have to get a... Figure out a way to transport them. So we're taking the very...
It's safe to assume...
...section that we've got.
As we give $450,000 from our foundation budget, it's safe to assume, then, that we are, in fact, giving $450,000 for social services.
Yeah, yeah. That's not going anywhere else.
I just wanted to clarify that because...
We have... The Risto Fund was given to us about 12 years ago, and we still have $300,000 left in that fund. And in the meantime, we put a new roof on the building, we've done a new pavement on the building, and we've done the facade where we put a couple of windows on it.
And they're more winning.
So we've made some improvements on that building, but we haven't tapped into the principal... Well, a little bit into the principal. Originally, it started at 400 and we're at 300 right now. So we do have some backup emergency relief, you know, to back up if things go wrong. But one of the things you told me, you know, six years ago, is don't ask for less money than you need because you're not going to come back and get any more gas money from you. So I was budgeting gas at 370. Well, we haven't seen 370 in several years, okay?
Well, and we want you to build up. I mean, you've been through the fire. I mean, you've had to come in front of us because of funding cuts elsewhere, and you've been in sort of desperation station at times, and we don't want to see you there. We want to see you with some capital holdings. We want to see you...
Well, if I get nine buses out there, that's another 2,000 rides. If gas goes up and I have to squeeze it back to eight and a half rides or eight rides again, I've got the flexibility to do that because I'm within the parameters of what the federal government says we can do. Fortunately, the federal government, if you look at the numbers, hasn't gone down.
Right.
I mean, they've been fairly consistent what they give us. We're still the smallest provider in Lake and Porter County with our eight buses. OE, because of the nature of their business, you know, transports more people in the bus at one time than we do because we're demand response. We're in Hebron and Council, pick somebody up and take them to the courthouse or take them to the doctor in Valpo.
Well, they want to get their training hours in before they come to you.
Come on, man.
Along the same avenue, I'm not familiar with your buses. Do you guys use a clean burn bus or...
No, no. We're still using...
And so, I know that Ellen has been to NERC. I think we've provided, sometimes we've provided money for additional vehicles. I think we appropriated one last year, I believe. I think there was $50,000 appropriated for a vehicle last year for OE. I was just kind of curious if you... Because I know there's some VW fund out there right now that the state has gotten $40 million in funds.
Right now, LaPorte is using natural gas. And there's some issues that you have with the cost on the maintenance and the longevity of the bus. And I'm not going to be the first one to step out and do that. We're getting... 80% of our buses are paid for by the federal government. We have to come up with 20%. And the last two buses we just purchased, or we are supposed to get here shortly, cost us $130,000. So I have to come up with 26 and the rest of it's covered. And they run good, you know, they're just... I'm not jumping on the natural gas right away. I mean, maybe it's going to be a grant that will have to eventually put us there because I think to do it effectively, you have to make sure you've got somebody who can take care of them, you know...
Well, I'm kind of familiar with the vehicles because natural gas doesn't leave any residue in the carburetor or any kind of injection system. So they actually do run much more efficiently and much easier to take care of. The only maintenance issue is oil. And so I know that it can be infiltrated through the natural gas process, but otherwise the engines last considerably longer than a regular petroleum...
They're a little bit more expensive on the initial buy, aren't they?
They are on the top end, yeah. So, but I just thought, because there's some money available, you know, to help you along the path, if we didn't have to repurchase the vehicles, it's something that was more of a petroleum basis.
Well, we still would be under the category of a three-year, 100,000-mile life expectancy on those vehicles, I would think. I mean, if you want to make that recommendation, you know, I will look at it more closely.
I think that's wrong, don't fix it.
Well, if we can make the dollars go farther, that's all I'm trying to do.
Well, like I'm saying is that I'm very comfortable. You give me more than enough money to run. If you pull back $50,000, I probably have to pull one bus off the road, okay? It's an adjustment factor. And like I mentioned, you know, it's an adjustment factor that went in our favor when we changed from Ryder to Dave's Automotive and we save ourselves $50,000 a year on maintenance, so...
In like five years, I'm going to need your service anyways.
You're getting there, man. Alright, but anyway, tell them anyway. Thank you. You guys are... Alright, that was awesome, man.
You've got a big job. I appreciate what you do, you know?
Well, thank you for what you do.
I know Shelby doesn't like it, but if you need to give $10,000 to OE, I mean, they do a nice job training drivers.
They do, we're good, thank you.
Alright, that's enough. We're with Porter Stark.
I don't mind. I just gave him 25.
Oh, okay, so, thanks.
Thank you. Great job.
Have a great day.
Scroll us down to Porter Stark, will you?
How are you guys doing? Thanks for sitting through the waiting and we have to leave.
Thank you.
Thank you. Both of my kids.
We haven't approved anything. We're just... There's a motion on it in the second.
Correct.
And we're just waiting to vote on it.
I think Dan wanted to...
Well, this is a different...
Okay. Can you guys hold on a minute?
We probably should.
Alright, so we have a motion in the second on the entire foundation budget. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I just want to echo what Dan said. Maybe my math is off a little bit, but we are funding $1.1 million for the social services out of that, so...
No, your math is right.
If people say that we're not, we continue to, you know, pick up the pieces that the state tears apart because they seem to care less about social services than, I don't know, than we do anyways. But, so I just wanted to echo that.
Anyone else have anything else?
I could just repeat what Jeremy just said, but it's true.
He was repeating me.
That's right.
I'm going to echo still.
So I won't repeat it.
Anybody agree with Shelby? Anyone else have anything?
In regards to the foundation. Hearing nothing? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Now, to Porter Stark. Thank you. Do we have anything in our book or no?
Yeah.
Maybe. Alright. Oh, that's right. We skipped them. So it looks like there is a change, correct?
Well, it's the state formula.
Okay, just like OE. So the number is 2186-576. We'll make a motion on that. We've got a motion, we've got a second. Anyone have any questions?
We have our auditor on the edge of her seat. Go ahead.
Counsel?
The final number is going to be determined by the state that there was a new state law that says that now you don't get just the gross portion, we have to factor in the tax gap. And so my calculations show that the number would be 2.143117. And I would recommend that you keep it as is.
Let the state do the thing.
The state determine it. And this is one of those situations where we get the credit against our... Well, in favor of our maximum level. So we're still...
Good. So we're asking for the maximum amount and hope they can...
What do you see now?
Well, my calculations by taking into account the tax gap, 2.143117. But don't hold me to that because the state...
My motion is 2186-576. We got a first, we got a second. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
And you'll... Vicky, you'll be in communication with them as you get it back, so...
Yes. We'll get that when we get our 17th meeting.
Any other questions?
So anything new in exciting Porter Stark management? You're here, you've waited all night. You've got it.
Well, thanks. Actually, I wanted to introduce myself since I don't know a lot of you. My name is Matt Burden. I'm actually the relatively new CEO at Porter Stark. I know many of you probably know Rocky. Rocky's still there as our Chief Strategy Officer. And I'm actually from LaPorte County and worked over in community mental health there for about the same period as Rocky was CEO. So we had a lot of great partnerships back and forth, and when the time was right and the fit was good, I made the switch. And I've been working with Mary and Aileen and Sandy and much of the team on various projects across the border for many years and happy to be part of Porter Stark now. Just a quick update on a couple of key things that have happened this year. I know Rocky had mentioned to me that he had said last year that one of our major challenges is workforce. It still continues to be a challenge. It's hard to get in doctors, especially in licensed staff, and to pay bachelor's level people a living wage. But I think we've made a lot of strides there this past year. We've gotten in a couple of new doctors and nurse practitioners. We're moving a little bit into telemedicine, not too much. We want to give a choice to people, so it's something a lot of people like, but we don't want to give it to people who don't like that. We've had some new initiatives with housing as well. I wanted to point out that in our annual report, we included an insert. Thank you, Vanna. For Aurora View Apartments and townhomes that are being opened up, and this is in collaboration with Housing Opportunities. I think all of us in the field agree that without stable housing, it's very hard to work on other problems. So this is a big step forward there. And then finally, I wanted to mention also, in terms of our methadone clinic and medication-assisted treatment in general, that program is probably not a surprise, has grown considerably just even in the last year. We're seeing about 33% more people at the same time versus last year. We were fortunate to receive some federal grant dollars to help with that recently, and we're going to use that to expand staff and do outreach and hopefully continue to serve more people in it.
Very good.
Welcome aboard, man.
Thank you. And thank you, you too. And thank you on behalf of Porter Stark for all the years of support that you've given. We can't do it without you guys, so thank you.